All right, and then I'll turn it over to the chair in case you have any final words. And then when we're ready, when we have a call, we can go.
And it looks like one, two, three, four, five, six. All right, we have six. Just FYI for folks. Quoc will not be with us tonight. He's sick. And harden condolences once again on your mother. And I appreciate you being with us tonight. It's extraordinary on your part, and I hope everybody in your family is doing well. Okay, are we ready to broadcast?
Mr. Chair, our Mark, this is Charlene. Do you want everybody other than school committee members to turn off their video unless they're presenting?
Yes, I was just about to jump in. That was one thing I forgot. So until you're presenting, we'll just have you keep your camera off. And that way, the chair or the school members, their video rises to the top of the list.
That's great. And Liz will be joining us momentarily as well. And Brenda will obviously be on throughout. All right.
I'm on right now.
Great.
Okay, I thought you didn't see me.
All right, ready when you are.
All right. Thank you very much. Good evening and welcome. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good evening once again, and welcome to this evening's School Committee meeting. We're beginning tonight's School Committee meeting with an annual hearing that we are required by law to hold each year, which is the Massachusetts School Choice Program for school year 2021. So before we get to our regular School Committee business, we're going to take a quick moment and pursuant to state law, hold this brief hearing and then take a vote when we move to action items later on whether or not the district will join the Massachusetts School Choice Program. We are required by law to take this vote by June 1st each year. And specifically, the question before us is whether the Boston Public Schools will admit non-residents to our schools. So first, I want to start, Ms. Sullivan, do we have any speakers registered this evening to testify on the school choice issue?
No, Mr. Sullivan. For the Massachusetts School Choice Plan.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Unless anyone has any questions, we can adjourn this hearing on the Massachusetts School Choice Program for school year 2021. Are there any questions from the committee? Well, then, hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn this hearing on the Massachusetts School Choice Program? Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Oliver Davila. Will you please call the roll, Ms. Sullivan?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil? Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you once again, Ms. Sullivan, and we'll move on now to our regular School Committee meeting. Since this is a virtual meeting, and I know this might be a little bit duplicative of what we just did, I'd like to begin by taking attendance. I understand Mr. Tran won't be joining us this evening due to illness. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll for the remainder of the members?
Dr. Coleman?
Present.
Mr. O'Neil?
Present.
Dr. Rivera?
Here.
Ms. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Tran is absent. Ms. Oliver Davila?
Present.
Mr. LaCanto?
Here.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that, Ms. Sullivan. For all of you that have joined us, as you know, tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Zoom, and it will be rebroadcast at a date on Boston City TV and on YouTube. It will also be posted to the School Committee's webpage likely by tomorrow. For those of you that are joining us on Zoom this evening, tonight's meeting documents are posted on the School Committee's webpage. It's located at bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee. Please look under the tab for the meeting on May 27. We have interpretation services available this evening in Spanish. Mr. Bernal, would you please introduce yourself in Espanol?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Juan Bernal. I am the Spanish interpreter. I will provide live interpretation during the public comment portion of the meeting for those in need of interpretation. I will now proceed to make the same announcement in Spanish. Muy buenas tardes para todos. Mi nombre es Juan Bernal. Soy el intérprete para español. Voy a proveer servicios de interpretación en vivo durante la porción de comentarios públicos de esta reunión para aquellas personas que necesiten la asistencia de un intérprete. Gracias. Take care much. Please proceed, Mr. LaCanto.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bernal, and thank you again for your services here this evening. For everyone who has signed up for public comment this evening, first, thank you for doing so. We have 14 public speakers signed up for comment this evening. As many of you know, our practice is to close the public sign up, excuse me, public comments sign up for both of our comment periods. And in fact, we had three comment periods this evening if you count the School Choice Plan at 4:30 on the afternoon prior to the meeting. So for those that have signed up, just a quick reminder, please make sure that the name that you have used to sign into Zoom this evening matches the name that you signed up for public comment so that we may able to, we may best be able to recognize you in the participant list and call on you and provide you the opportunity to speak when it is your turn. Mr. Bernal?
Yes.
You're still with us. Would you mind just repeating that those that are signed up, I know we have, I believe, three speakers this evening that are going to need interpretation services in Spanish. Would you repeat for them that we will need them to make sure that their names are adequately displayed in the attendee list?
Estaba diciendo el señor mister Loconto es importante aquellas personas que están participando que puedan poner su nombre de una forma adecuada como debe aparecer en la lista de las personas que van a atender. Aquellas personas que hablan español que van a hablar el nombre tiene que estar propiamente escrito. Gracias.
Thank you again, Mr. Bernal. We'll begin now with the approval of minutes from the May 13, 2020 School Committee meeting. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the May 13, 2020 School Committee meeting as presented. Sounds like Ms. Robinson jumped the gun. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Because this is a virtual meeting, once again, we'll ask Ms. Sullivan to briefly call the roll.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Move on now to the Superintendent's Report. I present to you our Superintendent, Dr. Brendan Casillas.
Thank you. Just getting, just getting off of mute. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thanks, everybody, for being with us tonight. I have a brief report tonight, but I want to thank everybody for joining us virtually and for all of my executive team members who are here with me as well. I want to first start off tonight by recognizing the tremendous loss that we we experienced yesterday, passing of Tech Boston's Academy co-master Keith Love. Keith brought so much joy to folks and fought a brave battle with cancer. And I was just heartbroken to receive this news. He has dedicated 20 years of his life to BPS students and families, and we're just going to miss him so much. Just two weeks ago, I participated in a car parade for Keith with hundreds of friends and relatives and Tech Boston community members to show him how much he meant to so many people. And I was honored to be there with commendations from all of you and from the mayor. And we thanked Keith for his profound impact on our BPS community. And I'll never forget that moment of his selfless joy that he gave to me when he thanked me for coming and said he was still bringing the juice. Just really warmed my heart, and we're swelling with bear pride right now and sending so much love to his family, co-master Nora Bernaza, and the entire TBA community. Please join me in just a moment of silence for our dear friend Keith Love. Thank you. Just a few updates for all of you today. One is, again, we continue to just have such a tremendous, incredible opportunity to provide food access to so many of our children within the Boston community, including children who are not Boston Public School students. Again, we have 17 BPS sites across all the city, as well as partnering with our city partners with that. And we serve meals from 8:30 until 11:30 a.m. We're also delivering meals to our students who regularly receive door-to-door transportation and receive special education services. As of this afternoon, we provided 646,000 meals across all distribution models. Of that figure, more than 235,000 meals have been delivered to students' homes. We're serving up to about 20,000 meals a day, and last week was our biggest week yet as we distributed over 90,000 meals in just one week. Katie's Closet, again, such a great partner, makes weekly deliveries of products to our meal sites, and they've provided over 180,000 personal hygiene products since school closed. Information on emergency meal locations, including dozens of other emergency meal sites across the city of Boston, is available at bostonpublicschools.org. Again, I want to thank all of our food nutrition staff and bus drivers and bus monitors and all the many volunteers who have all worked so incredibly collaboratively and the families, for the families who need it, and also worked this past Memorial Day even to make sure that our students were fed. With our technology, we distribute Chromebooks. As of today, we've distributed just five short of 32,000 Chromebooks in Boston Public Schools and to our students. This has been an incredible feat of our technology team, so I want to give them big kudos. And then families, if you're still in need, you can go to bostonpublicschools.org/laptop, and that's in 10 different languages. In order for us to get you one, you can also call the parent hotline at 617-635-67783. I think that's the right number, and I should probably get that corrected. We're also working to provide students and families with Wi-Fi hotspots, and we're providing other internet connectivity assistance. The family hotline, I had that wrong. The district has established a BPS parent hotline at 617-635-8873. So I got the numbers mixed up there. So 617-635-8873. I want to make sure our families have that right number. That is multilingual folks on there who can help families with navigating any of their needs. And we're open on the hotline Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Recently, we've been providing assistance to families who are interested in the pandemic EBT card, or otherwise known as PEBT program. And but if you believe your address is not up to date in our system, please go online. We've created a form, and BPS staff members will be helping families complete this either online or over the phone in multilingual support. We are then providing our partners at Project Bread with updated home address information so that families can receive their cards in the mail. This address change is only for the PEBT program. And to permanently change your address in our student information system, we ask that families contact Welcome Services. And for more information on the PEBT program, please email food@boston.gov or call our family helpline. Again, that number is 617-635-8873. One of the things I'm really proud of is the work that our mental health team is doing, and May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And as this is a very difficult time for all of us, I want to provide an update on some of the behavioral health services we're providing to students and families. BPS Behavioral Health Services has 85 mental health providers who have made contact to more than 1,600 students since school closed. We are also providing telehealth services to more than 1,000 students. Our coronavirus page also has mental health resources for parents and caregivers, including crisis support hotlines. In an effort to provide families with helpful tips and resources, Behavioral Health Services has partnered with a number of our community experts to provide brief trainings on everything from parenting tips to healthy technology habits. You can find a schedule of the spring workshops and other mental health resources at bostonpublicschools.org/coronavirus. Summer learning, Boston has long been a model of enriching hands-on summer programming, and we're committed to providing learning opportunities for youth this summer as well. We are finalizing plans to continue our learning, but in a remote fashion during the summer. We'll share details, but, excuse me, we'll share details very soon once everything is finalized. All plans for summer will continue to keep the safety of our students and staff at a top priority while ensuring equitable access to engaging and enriching learning. We'll also continue to provide meals for children over the summer and are working through the logistics to where our summer meal sites will be. We're working on developing programs, hiring teachers, and identifying and prioritizing students who will and we hope to have a parent letter out soon on what those opportunities will be for their students. We're also partnering with Boston After School and Beyond, who will have enrichment opportunities during the summer as well as working with our city partners around jobs and youth programs. Fall reopening and stakeholder engagement, this is really important. I'm getting a lot of questions about reopening, as you can imagine. And so what we're going to be doing is, in addition to some of the summer planning, we are working on multiple contingencies to safely reopening the school buildings this fall and all of the different complex decisions that we'll have to make in order to do that. Ms. Tammy Post is putting those together. I know you've heard me call her the COVID czar before and really getting us all to work in our lanes, but also head in the right direction, as she likes to say. You can imagine there's many, many, many things to account for in the event that we're not allowed to go to school or that we are allowed to go to school or that we may have interim closure. And so this is both a state decision, and we expect guidance out from DESI next week, as well as coordinating with the city partners and getting all of those safety precautions in order. Monica Roberts and her team are going to be working to work with our community and parents and to hear their ideas. We're going to be working with our teachers' union and our school leaders and having everybody's input into these plans as we move forward, and more information should be coming by the end of this week. All of this is going to be informed by what the public health guidance suggests we should be doing. And like I said yesterday in the city council hearing, you know, we're going to want to make sure we are able to check off every single one of those boxes before we transport our children to schools and make sure that they're safe and our staff is safe. As for student privacy, as you know, we brought forth toward the end of April, a policy for student privacy and data sharing. We wanted to take another deep dive into that policy, given the hesitation by most of the members on the school committee and take another shot at getting some broad-based consensus in this meeting. So we'll be meeting with our stakeholders and our advocates over the next month and a half in order to develop a policy and more broadly look at what do we want to create in terms of a health and safety needs of our students as we return and reopen schools after COVID. I think this gives us a really great opportunity to think differently about the role of Boston School Police, about prevention, about trauma-informed practices and culturally and sustaining linguistic practices as well in how we work with our youth and how we work on these policies moving forward. Our goal is to have that policy to the School Committee by August. So we have a lot of work to do, and that work is going to be starting next week. Lastly, we have final budget hearing was last night. I'd like to thank the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee on the City Council, Kenzie Bach, for her leadership, for working with our team on aligning that to the strategic plan. I'd also like to thank Nate Cooter and his finance team and all the other department employees who participated in giving data and content to those presentations. I think it was really informative for the city council. We answered several hundred of their questions and had several hours of testimony, usually very long days, but it was very well worth it. I'm very thankful to the mayor for his three-year, $100 million commitment to our schools and to the strategic plan, which I'm very proud of, and we are ready to commence that work. This budget is a budget built on equity, and it is a budget that is aligned to support our highest needs students and support our teachers in delivering an excellent education, and it's one that matches our strategic plan quite nicely. I'm very, very proud of it, and I hope I'll get a yes vote out of the city council. And high school redesign, tonight, we will be presenting Dr. McIntyre and Dr. Brueggemann. We'll be presenting some of the work within our strategic plan around high school redesign. And Andrea Zayas will be presenting on mass core policy. Super proud of this work, been working on it all year, but as you know, this is just a commencement of that work. There's still deeper level planning of work that will need to be done next year for implementation of all of these ideas, course development around the mass core policy, and the mass core will impact as we phase it in the class of 2025, which is our current seventh graders. So that's all that I have tonight to share, and that's my update.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. I'll open up now to members for questions and discussion. And as we are opening up, it looks like Ms. Robinson's ready to speak. For the remainder of the members, if you'd like to speak, please. Mr. O'Neil, it looks like you've raised your hand as well. If you want to virtually raise your hands in Zoom, I can make sure we get to each one of you. So we'll start with Robinson, then on to Mr. O'Neil.
Yes, Superintendent, thank you so much for your reporting, for the continued hard work you and your team continue to do. I have a question about Wi-Fi, and I know that in the beginning of all this, Verizon and some of our other Wi-Fi internet partners had proposed providing free Wi-Fi for a particular period of time. And my question is, will Wi-Fi still be able to be provided free for students until the time when they actually go back to school?
So this is a huge priority for me, Ms. Robinson, in that our students do have connected Wi-Fi as well as computers and tech. So that is our top priority, given we do believe we will still be remote. Whether companies will still provide it to us free is unknown at this time. But we hope that they will provide it for free or at low cost for us still so that we can afford it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Ms. O'Neil?
Thank you. So Superintendent, thank you for the presentation, particularly about the food and the computers. We've talked about that a lot. I know it's now been a couple of weeks since you have started the Remote Learning 2.0, where the school leaders have been empowered to kind of have strategy for their schools. We talked about it at the last meeting. And obviously, a lot of us saw, as you undoubtedly did, the Globe did a story this week about students that are not, that are virtual dropouts. What are we doing to really try on a school-by-school level, test how many students, and I don't mean test from an assessment viewpoint, probe, I should say, on how many students are actually engaged? And if they're not, what are we doing to reach out to them, to actually engage them? And I noticed a national publication called The 74 did an article about what they're doing in San Antonio, where they were reaching out to students, and they were using every network possible. They actually talked about a band director reaching out through students in the band to contact all 74 on his band when they realized that 20 were not engaged. So what are we doing to help school leaders and encouraging them to use every network in their means to find these students? And my closing comment is, you know, I appreciate it when you say, for example, what the number is that parents could call and what the website is. But when we hear examples of being able to go to the website to get a Chromebook, well, that's tough to do if you don't have a computer and you don't have internet access. What are we doing to reach around, to get to those students that are falling off the radar screen?
Thank you for asking that, Mr. O'Neil. We have several ways that we're doing that, and I think we're much like the school district you mentioned in that, you know, all of our kids matter to us, and we are trying desperately to reach every single one of them. Matter of fact, we had a data point with where we, when we first started with hundreds and thousands of kids, not hundreds of thousands, but hundreds or thousands of kids that we thought we didn't yet contact in that first week. And I said to the school leaders, we need to find every single kid. And so they really went and looked and had their teachers call and did everything. And we are down to just 120 kids that we haven't had any contact with out of 54,000. And we've tried everything, but we don't have the right address or the right telephone number to contact those 120. And we keep trying to try to keep contacting because those 120 still matter to me. But in terms of students who aren't engaging, that is real. We do have some students who are yet still not engaging, but we are trying to continue to work with the families to have them engage, and we're using our supervisors of attendance. Teachers are calling and asking them to sign on. Principals are keeping track of this, and we're able to work with them. But I think the number that was reported is much larger than what's actually happening because we're not actually able to data capture everything that teachers are doing. For instance, if they're phone calling students, we're not able to capture that. We're just now working on a new system to capture all the Zoom meetings that teachers are having because we weren't able to capture that earlier prior to this new data system that we put in place. So we think we're going to have better data for that data capture. Remember, we weren't a one-to-one district. So we didn't have computers out there. Not all of our kids were connected on the internet. And the first part of our phase in learning was more of an independent study around the paper packets that we gave students while we were still handing out the Chromebooks, while we're still getting families Wi-Fi, and then while we were actually really getting teachers up to the level of knowing how to do remote learning and getting online and what a Google Classroom was because that just wasn't our practice before. And so I'm very proud of the work that the school teachers are doing every single day. They're not only taking care of students' learning needs, but they're also taking care of their mental health needs. They're doing crisis support. Just today, I got an email from a teacher saying, I have a family that's homeless, and they're doubled up and they need something right away. And so, and I get these often where they're problem solving. One of the really unique things that we've done is we've put in place Equity Roundtables. We have a district-wide Equity Roundtable that we have where we problem solve and look at these issues. And then we also have school-based Equity Roundtables. A great example is at the Tynan. She got a list of students who didn't have computers, and she didn't have a way of knowing that before we gave her the data because, you know, it's, we didn't know who had computers at home and who didn't, right? And so she went and rallied her community and got those 46 kids the computers. And so that's a great example of those Equity Roundtables, getting the data, taking a problem of practice and rallying their partners and their communities around children and what they need. And there's just, I could give you hundreds of other stories just like that of the great work our teachers and principals are doing each and every day to reach each and every kid.
Yeah, Superintendent, I actually know how important that commitment is to you, every single one of our children. And so this is what I wanted to hear. Thank you for highlighting it. And again, considering the position we were starting in, as you said, we were not a one-to-one district. We are so far ahead of what our peers are doing, but it's first getting all of them connected. And I did see the interesting tip, and I'm probably preaching to the choir when I say this, is sometimes the students are more likely, and Ms. Reyes would probably chime in on this one, are more likely in some cases to talk to a fellow student than they are about some of their embarrassments or why they're not connected versus they may to a teacher or to a principal that's calling. So sometimes it's helpful to, for those last 154, are we reaching out to fellow students that they're friends with to try to track them down? And then, but that next piece is, once we have them all connected, how are we making sure that they're engaged? And I'm glad to hear you're providing the data to the school leaders for all our school leaders across the district so that they can tackle it at their individual level.
So yeah, I would say that, you know, as the teachers get more practice, they get better each week.
Right.
But it is about a practice. You know, they have to learn how to teach in this whole new world. And many of them have young children themselves that they're balancing, and so, you know, it's... And many of them have young children themselves that they're balancing, and so, you know, it's, it is, it just takes some time to get good at how to do online learning and how to create that connectedness and relationship with children in that kind of environment, where there's a lot of other distractions that may be going on in the home. And so, and I think we also have a lot to learn about how we serve our EL students in the online environment with language barriers and how we support families in that. Because families have to be able to support their children in this time, because we don't have them in our classroom, they're in the home. And so providing that support to families is really, really important, especially if the materials are presented in English. Although our EL office has done a nice job with the multilingual libraries and some of the resources in EL, and I'm sure Andrea could speak to some of the work that the EL office is doing. But we all know that we still have to do better in those services, and also then with the itinerant services that students with special needs get. This is something that actually keeps me up at night, because I just know that there are students who need that face-to-face to continue to see growth, because that's how they learn best. Some of our students with autism or students who are multiply impaired, who really do need their teachers, and they need them face-to-face to really progress.
Right. And final quick question for you. Who on your team is looking at this on a school-by-school basis? It's at the area superintendent, district superintendents? And then are they working with the school leaders to see what the level engagement is?
Yes, they are. They're working with their school leaders, and they're calibrating, as you know, with the Remote Learning Plan. We required a master schedule. So all of those are posted, and so they're looking at those and looking at the quality of those across schools. And then they're sharing best practices with each other, where the best practices are, as well as teachers are sharing just organically, like they always do. I say, teachers learn best from other teachers, and so that's happening there. And then our academic team, under Dr., I don't think she's Dr. quite yet, Andrea Zayas's leadership, they've been working to curate our online virtual resources as well for teachers. And so that's been extremely helpful as a guide for our teachers to use those as well.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. And Dr. Casselli, just to recap, so that Globe article that Mr. O'Neill referenced mentioned upwards of ten thousand students that may not have been contacted by the district to date, going back to May seventeenth. But did I hear you write earlier that we've closed that gap to a hundred and twenty students? There's a hundred and twenty students we haven't been able to contact?
Right, that's contact. I think the Globe was talking about engaging, and so two different data points. One is about what we're able to capture with going online, and that was in the two-week period that we had from May fourth until now, as we were starting to take attendance, starting to capture what teachers were teaching, that different application. So that's really what's in a system called Clever and a system that's in Google Classroom. And we know that there are projects that, that, that teachers are giving parents to do and students to do with their children, especially our youngest children, who are three years old or four years old, that are not captured in either Clever or Google Classroom.
Right, and there's a number of schools that are working, programs that are external to those two applications. And there's a number of applications, in fact, within the clever suite that students can access directly. And I think Lexia Core Five is one that my child uses, and I believe she uses it directly. And so that might not register for the numbers that we're seeking to track. So we have, in other words, we have an imperfect system that's been developed over the last two months to track the way in which we're presenting our online learning. But nevertheless, we've made this extraordinary effort to provide not only the Chromebook supports and the network supports with over two thousand hotspots delivered across the city, in addition to those thirty-one thousand Chromebooks, but the food that allows these kids to make it through the day and be ready for school and ready for learning and achieve as best we can. We acknowledge, of course, that we have much more to do, and this is a situation that none of us anticipated. And we're learning from it every day. But nevertheless, I want to pause and make sure that, as you've done many times, we lift up the work that the members of our district that are working day and night to serve our students have been doing. So move on now to Dr. Coleman for a comment.
Great, thank you. I just want to take a few minutes to deeply commend you, Superintendent, for the time and efforts that you're putting in to building partnerships across all the silos of Boston to really begin to organize themselves, to really support the kids through schooling. This is a great opportunity. I mean, unfortunately, we take advantage of, we had this crisis, but you're taking care of this opportunity to really build coalitions, and I hope we can really cement and facilitate with greater strength as we go forward, because that's fundamentally what we need. And so I want to commend you and your team on the efforts. I know I sit on the COVID-nineteen meetings on Friday. It's just impressive how well people begin to share information, work together, identify problems, and work together to solve it. And I commend your leadership and the trust you're building in the community to move that forward. People are trusting that you're going to make every effort to make this work. So, and then I have a question, and then I can't resist making a, suggesting an approach that can be ignored. My question is, how well is, what are the ways in which you're working with your peer in the, and the mayor's cabinet, who's responsible for low-income housing, to make this access in the works? That's where the kids are now, and that's where the Wi-Fi problems are coming up. And how's that relationship going? Is there anything we can do to help you with that? That's my question. And then an observation that I know that historically, large urban schools have not been able to have the ability to create what a lot of our smaller schools, smaller communities, and sort of our private communities, or advisories, where teachers actually have a set of students, they're responsible for acknowledging their progress through the system as a way to encourage, you know, it's one thing for the principals, but that's still a lot of kids. And I'm wondering if anyone's using advisories to kind of build out that teacher, not just in the classroom relationship, but also identifying that group of ten or fifteen kids in the school, that they should know where they are.
Yeah, those are great questions, and thank you for the recognition on the partners. You know, that's Monica Roberts and her team and the great work that they're doing, as well as all the executive team members who really do reach out to our partners, our higher education partners. I know they reached out to you on your suggestion the other day at the last meeting to have some additional counseling support and help. There's just so much that our nonprofit partners and organization, community-based leaders are doing to support our students in this time with their well-being, their health, just keeping them engaged, you know, food access. I know that Associated Latina, Alex, you know, has given some of her general fund money, I think, to some of the kids and families that really need help. I mean, it's just like everybody is reaching in and doing as much as they possibly can. As for our city partners, they've been terrific. I'm on the call every day at eight o'clock with the mayor and the cabinet and some of the department heads on the cross-sector work that we're doing on housing, on health access, on testing. They're using some of our buildings. You know, there's just a lot of collaboration that's happening across the city, and it is truly remarkable. So really proud to be part of that with our team. As for advisories, I think that that's a best practice that actually has been recommended on reopening. And so we considered it as part of our remote learning process. But because schools were so autonomous already, and some of them had already had schedules in place, we didn't want to disrupt that right now, but it is a best practice that we are going to be looking at as part of our reopening. I don't know that we'll actually fall on that, but it is, it's been suggested to do that, to make the environment more personal, to make sure we don't lose kids, and to make sure that everybody has a responsible adult that they have a relationship with, and that checks up on them. And we're also taking care to really think about those first couple of weeks back at school, because there will be so much need for healing and for reconnecting and for building of community. So we're trying to be extremely thoughtful about that process as well, so that everybody feels safe when they come back to school this fall, especially since there will be new routines that kids won't be used to, like wearing a mask or standing apart. And, you know, typically, they run up to you and give you a hug. You know, so you just think about, how do you create joy in a school classroom where it is somewhat sanitized? And, you know, it just breaks my heart. So I've got to think, as Superintendent, what's my responsibility to create still joyful learning environments that children want to come to, where they feel safe and they feel loved? That's really my top priority.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, Dr. Coleman, for your questions. We'll go now to Dr. Rivera.
So good evening. I had a question about the Globe article, but I think we've talked about it. And I appreciate some of the clarification about those numbers. I certainly heard a lot over the weekend, this week, about the concerns, again, around serving our English learners. So I'm glad to hear that we're really trying to make some serious efforts for the data capturing and getting that really accurate. So I thank you for that. My question is about the summer learning. Excuse me, allergies. You had meant, well, the school district is trying to do some types of assessments to perhaps recommend and identify which students might really need some summer learning opportunities to stem the learning loss. And so I'm just curious how, you know, how we're going to really reach out to some of those young, you know, young people that really may not even be doing the assessments that are being rolled out currently. So yeah, so really two questions about, you know, how the assessments are going to be useful to identifying the students that need the summer learning, and then, you know, how will we reach those students that maybe did not take the assessments?
Yeah, thank you for that. You know, I don't know how many districts across the Commonwealth are doing assessments, but the commissioner put out prerequisite standards that would demonstrate that students needed to know to really pass on and do well in the next grade. So we took those and had those serve as a foundation for our remote learning and asked our teachers to teach to those prerequisite standards. And then we asked for them to align two assessments to ELA and two assessments to math. So to the English learning and also to the math, or the English Language Arts and the math. That is an imperfect science, because as you know, assessments are typically proctored in a classroom. You know, there's security there. You can watch the students take them, and they're used to that environment for taking assessments. They're also usually high-stakes assessments, so kids, you know, often will try on them, because you have to pass them. Whereas, you know, these are not high-stake assessments. They really serve as almost like a quiz or an understanding for the teacher on how students are doing. So they were meant to be low-pressure assessments for students, shorter, much shorter than a typical assessment, you know, with four to five items for a student to do to better understand whether they are or not meeting the standards and mastering those. We'll use those assessments as one indicator for looking at who we should invite to summer school and summer session. So that's one indicator. The next is, were they off track prior to pre-COVID? And are they still off track now? And that's typical, you know, students who were struggling before closure are probably still struggling now. And who are those students? Then there's a third group of students who are, they should have been graduates, but they weren't credit-ready. And so we are focusing on those non-graduate students, so that they can get the support that they need. And then we're also looking at students who are retained one or more times prior in their school career to be able to look at, you know, students who are maybe behind grade level for multiple years. And those students should be invited. There are students who maybe should have attended summer school last year, but didn't, right? And so those are kind of the kids who are on our radar. The other indicator is kids who just chronically haven't been attending school all year, or maybe are still not engaging. We aren't waiting, though, until June twenty-second to, you know, talk to these students. We've asked every single principal to develop a school student support team and to write success plans for our students, and to count every single school except one. And I think we talked to them yesterday, had student support teams up and success plans going. I think we have upwards of fifteen to twenty percent of students who have an individualized success plan now. And so we want to continue those success plans through the summer and provide additional supports to those children, and sometimes actually to the whole family. As you know, we have forty-five students who are homeless at any one time during the school year, and so they need a significant amount of support and help in this kind of remote learning environment, where, you know, the housing is not stable.
Just, and are these assessments also being given to English learners? I'm not sure.
Yes, they are. They're still given to our English learners. But it's not a perfect assessment. You know, I admit that it's not a perfect assessment, because it's done remotely, but it is better than nothing. It's just one more, it's just one more piece of evidence to use in the overall picture of the other pieces that I shared with you earlier.
And so, and then I wear like another hat in terms of running some of, one of the summer learning academies, the Tag Summer Learning Academy through the fifth-quarter portfolio programs. And I'm curious of where the dates might be of the timeline of when these, you know, programs will be able to get started.
So I think they start July sixth. Andrea's on the, I think she's here as well, so she might be able to share with us the date. But I do think it starts July sixth, and I do want to correct myself with the English Language Learner assessments. They're not for English Language Learner Level One and Two. They're three fours and fives.
Okay, so there's no change to the dates for the fifth-quarter programs, because those were the original dates?
No, I don't think so. Now, I think that there's shifts in how they're going to deliver, depending on what the sheltering in place or the orders are for that. I think that might look different. But I know that, you know, ever since, I called Chris Smith the Saturday after we closed and said, I think it's going to look a little different this summer. And we started working together on that.
Okay, thank you very much.
And they've been very close partners, working with Andrea and her team.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera, and good chance for us to thank the district, the Office of English Language Learners, and the superintendent in particular, and working with Council Great City Schools on additional screening measures during these times related to incoming EL students for our district. So thank you for that work as well. Move on now to our student representative, Ms. Reyes, with a question.
Thank you. I actually had a quick comment that I just wanted to bring us back to the advisory piece that Dr. Coleman brought up, and I wanted to share my experience really quickly. O'Brien didn't have advisories pre-COVID, and then now we do. And of course, we don't have the capability to, like, meet in person, and so it's more of one-on-one communication with our advisor. But so far, I found it really helpful. So yeah, I just wanted to share that really quickly. And I definitely think that if there is space and time to make advisories part of our new school experience, you know, when we return, well, when folks return in the fall, then I think that that would be fantastic. And that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Evelyn. I agree with you. You know, it just kind of grounds everybody. There's a number of schools who are meeting to do the Pledge of Allegiance, or they meet in the morning at the same time for, you know, their school moto, and they, or their school pledge, or they do a morning meeting, and they open the day. And I think that sets still a sense of community, and it gets everybody signed into school, and then they can get their assignments and then go on. So it is a best practice across the nation that I'm hearing about from my colleagues.
That's great, and thank you for that timely feedback, Ms. Reyes. Move on now to Vice Chair, Alba Davila.
Thank you, Chair. So I, again, want to acknowledge the district for all the work that you have been doing and thank the team, because I know it's been just tireless. So I do want to recognize that there's numerous great things happening, and we know it's And we know it's not perfect, but we're, you know, working on it every day. So thank you. I wanted to say, in terms of the article as well, I'm glad to get more clarity on that. Only just say that we need to do everything that we need to do to get our ELL students engaged, involved and participating. So whatever it takes, you know, there's a lot of partners also willing to help us make that happen. So we need to just use all the different connections. And as Mr. O'Neil gave some of those really great examples, just keep doing that. I think that there are a number of best practices, I think, that we should carry forward and continue to institute. I think the master schedule is a big deal for families to actually know what your students are doing during the school day. Is a, is a new thing that I haven't seen before and I love it. I, I love the fact that I can get, you know, daily summaries of what my daughter is doing and what she's not doing, more importantly, which we have a lot of struggle there, to be quite honest. But I think these are things that, you know, it, you know, I don't consider myself the most tech savvy person, but I think I know how to navigate a computer and it was challenging to kind of figure out. So I think some of the things that I've seen, I participated in some of the, the online family conversations that BPS has been having. So I think having the technology piece would be really helpful. You know, how to like use Google Classroom and how to look up stuff. So I'd love to continue that practice as we move forward. Because I think at the end of the day, we're talking about family engagement. And so those things engage our families. And, you know, the fact that we've had more families, and I'm not saying it's perfect. We have a long way to go because we also have still technology challenges, Wi-Fi challenges, language barriers. And I understand those, so I don't want to, you know, sugarcoat it. But I do think moving in that direction is the right direction. And I kind of want to keep those things front and center. And then obviously having the Chromebooks, and I know we haven't gotten to everybody yet, but we're really trying to do that. Those are all really great best practices that we should continue. I think one thing, I know it's hard to do and I get it because I run an organization. The address and phone number piece is really, really challenging. But if there's a way that we can, you know, continually get addresses and phone numbers of families, you know, as a practice, because we don't want to get to an emergency place where we find out we don't have the right address. We don't have the right phone number. So I think if we can just think about how we institutionalize that on a more consistent and regular basis. And then lastly, I just want to say that the summer learning piece. So I, I am a little bit nervous about summer in general. And just in terms of how much, you know, young people have already and children have already been on screen time. So I think it's going to be, we're going to have to be really, really creative as we move forward for, for summer. And how do we motivate our families to continue on this path of summer? And how does the district just work more closely with community partners? And principals at schools working more closely with community partners? Because, you know, Lorna and I are external programs for summer. And usually we go out into schools and we recruit schools, young people in person. We're not going to have that ability anymore. We have the young people that have, you know, that we've been working with during the year. But this is where we also always get an influx of new students. So I would like to just see just more collaboration and more conversation. And how, and just thinking about some strategies to motivate our families to continue on this and to let them know that, yes, there's going to be, you know, screen time. But there's also, I think we can also be really creative where we, we're having, you know, kids and students log off and do something else and come back. Or having, you know, small groups across different organizations working together. I just think there's just so much more creativity. And so I just want to encourage us because I don't want students not to go. Summer learning has never been so important. This is going to be true, real summer loss. And so I just want us to figure out how we, what's the messaging? What are, what are some of the motivating things we can add for families to sign up and continue with us in the summer? Because I think it'll be even more, you know, we'll have even more disparity, you know, if we don't have more families taking advantage of these summer programs.
Yeah, thank you for that. You know, I think most of what I'm reading too, it's not just one summer, but it's going to take two or three summers to make up. So this is going to be a multi-year effort to really look at, watch, gauge, watch the data closely. That's where I think these advisories will come in place nicely because they'll develop the long-term relationship with the students. Because sometimes our students are highly mobile and go from school to school too. So we have to think about all of those barriers as well. But you gave me an idea about how we do like Zoom signups. How do we communicate? And I think I'm going to bring this back to BSAC on Thursday because I get my best ideas from them. How do, how can we get the information out to students about opportunities this summer? Because you're not going face to face in the schools. I hadn't thought about that. And so that's really good. So Evelyn, can you put that on the agenda? And we can talk about ways that we can get that out and make sure kids know what to sign up for.
Sorry, also, I just think that making sure that every principal knows what every student is doing for the summer and that principals also know every program that is available. So not just, you know, from student to student, but it also, it's another way. If a, if a principal or teacher is reaching out to a family and saying, hey, you know, there's a summer program that I think would be great for you, is also something that would be important to do.
Yeah, get a summer plan for each student. And then get that, Monica is probably on the call. We can also see about how do we get the information to parents as well, not just, I was thinking the older students, but some of our little ones too. We are doing a very creative project with our early childhood team. With summer projects each week for our youngest seven, or 700 youngest learners. So pretty excited. I'm not quite ready to bring that to school committee, but I should, I'll be telling you about it in a couple of weeks. Ms. Robinson probably knows about it already.
Well, thank you, Dr. Castellius, and thank you, Vice Chair. And I should note as well, thank you to the Vice Chair for stepping up to serve on the task force, the Mayor's Task Force for reopening the city and bringing that education and that youth service perspective to that conversation. We greatly appreciate you doing that. And, and you know, when we think about the reentry, a lot of this is going to depend on how we get creative with our finances as well in order to cover the anticipated additional costs of what goes along with a more robust summer learning experience. And so I've had some conversations with our budget office to better understand the position we find ourselves in. And I've asked them to come back to the school committee in a few weeks at our next session to talk a little bit more about the end of the year here and how we might be able to make creative use of our remaining funds. The work we can do with our partners. And Dr. Castellius and others have mentioned Chris Smith and Boston After School and Beyond and many other partners in that conversation and how they can support us in that work. And then how, once the calendar moves to July 1 and we're in a new fiscal year, we can make use of all those committed resources that we have in the budget that we voted on just a few short months ago. So we're really looking forward to hearing a little bit more about that and hearing more about how the shape of our summer programs come into view as we move into June. So one other item I did want to ask you about Superintendent for your input is the dash, the data dashboard that you mentioned earlier. Do you have any sort of sense of when that might be available for the committee and for public consumption?
Well, we are working on, we have a prototype now. The only things we're working on are the final quality assurances on the data that's going. And we did the data integration with the first wave of data on the clever and the Google Classroom. Now, just last week, we started adding in the Zoom data and we just have to QC it to make sure that it's spitting out what we think is spitting out and then get that to school leaders so that they can make any necessary corrections that they have to make. So we were hoping, you know, in the next week or so that we'll have that available.
Well, that's excellent. And that will be made publicly available on the website, as I, as I heard you say earlier.
Yeah, that's, that's the intent, is to have parent-friendly reports for them to be able to look at and to use on the website. And I don't know if Mary Dillman is on the call, but I know she's been working with Mark Racine furiously on it. And I know that we had one prototype. I just don't know if it's on a public website yet or if we're, because we had some earlier data, but.
I am happy to elaborate.
That'd be great.
Superintendent. So, yep, so we've been working really hard on ensuring that the data is as accurate and up to date as possible, but also to the superintendent's point that it's accessible for the only ones in the general public. And so we've been working in close collaboration with our colleagues at the city and our communications office with our data team to help all those folks put their heads together for the best possible product. And so we are aiming for next week, hopefully, to be able to have that up. And it will be accessible on the Boston Public Schools website. And we will ensure that there's also a welcome letter and overview that is translated into all of our BPS languages as well. So that's also part of the timing piece, just ensuring that that translation piece is also in place.
Well, that's great.
And then the intent, Mr. Chair, is that school equity teams would be able to look at this and pick a problem of practice that day because they'll have student-level data. And so they'll be able to problem solve with the school leaders and the teachers and then bring the big aggregate information and say, you know, we're having this problem with computers, for instance, and, or Wi-Fi, help us better understand what would be a great way to do it. Or we're not getting every kid signed up for summer school. How do we make sure every student signed up for summer school?
Well, that's excellent. Thank you for elaborating on that. We look forward to seeing that data. Thank you as well for calling on Ms. Dillman. I know you've announced it in a previous meeting, but I think we should congratulate her. Ms. Dillman will be shortly taking over as your permanent chief of staff. I believe it's starting June 1, if I'm not mistaken. So congratulations to her. For those of you that don't know, Ms. Dillman's been with the district for a number of years. She actually outranks many of us on this call, going back to the days of Carol Johnson. And so we're, we're happy to have her experience helping us along as we transition into this new world. And we've been, you know, very appreciative, of course, of the work that she's done with the Office of Data Accountability over the last few years. So welcome. Congratulations, Mary. I also did want to say that's, with Mary's beginning, that also signals an end for our interim chief of staff, Charlene Bryner, who's been with us all this year and has been such a great help. I know to you, Superintendent, in your transition into Boston and learning our system, but also to all of us in ensuring that this district runs smoothly. And I think one of the greatest testaments to her work has been that we don't hear from her very much, which is the hallmark of a good chief of staff. But certainly the work that she's done with our communities around the student information sharing policy, among many other endeavors. And I mentioned that one specifically because of the work that you did today with our United, excuse me, Unafraid Educators and Student Information, excuse me, Student Immigrant Movement. When I get all my acronyms right. To put together a working group that will ensure that we bring those, bring policies forward on student information sharing and police access in our schools that reflect a consensus you and our community. And so thank you once again to Charlene. Good luck to Mary. And we're, we're, as always, very appreciative of the work that our, our staff across Boston Public Schools does on behalf of our students every day. So with that, I don't think I have any other questions or comments. And we've had a pretty spirited discussion as normal here. This is really, other than my day job, this is the only human interaction I get aside from my kids. So it's always nice to see you guys once every two weeks. I'll entertain a motion now to receive the superintendent's report as presented.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Any discussion or objection to that motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil? Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Superintendent's report is approved unanimously.
Well, thank you again, Ms. Sullivan. And before we move on to public comment, we'll have a brief report from our student representative, Ms. Reyes. I think this might actually be your, your last report. Or are you going to be with it at the end of June?
I'm still figuring that out. TBD. We'll get back to you.
You can take an anticipatory bow at the end of this report. How about that?
Yeah. Great. So my, my report is rather short tonight, but I wanted to start by sharing that I have some fellow BSAC members who will be presenting later tonight with our chief academic officer. And they were able to meet with her last week and discuss MasCor and the ins and outs of the district's plan for that. And of course, we'll be hearing from them later, so I'll leave it to them. Coming up soon, we will be hosting a town hall in conjunction with City Council and Savvy George about securing the student vote on the school committee. And we welcome folks to join us for that, young people in particular. Details regarding the date and time will hopefully be confirmed tonight. And then there will be a form for folks to register and that'll be sent out soon. Yesterday, so actually every year, let me start with this. Every year, we have a civic course that runs in BSAC where students are able to earn a .5 credit that goes into Aspen for their work and dedication to BSAC. And yesterday, it was the time for students who participated in that this year to present their final projects. Typically, these are presented at the Boston Area Educators for Social Justice Conference, but due to our current global situation, they had to be done virtually. Thankfully, they were a huge success and they were joined by several headmasters, including Andrew Bolt, Dana Brown, Robert Remedy, as well as Natasha Scott, Director of History and Social Studies, Kelly Hung, Monica Roberts, and folks from the Nellie May Foundation. Students from each of our subcommittees presented in teams from our Student Rights and Student Voice Subcommittee. We had a presentation on bathroom equity. And they used the title Potty Time: Improving Bathrooms. From our Environmental Justice and Sustainability Subcommittee, they presented on the Green New Deal. And from our School Climate Culture and Improvements Subcommittee, they presented on hub schools and that model. Also, as Chairman LaCanto mentioned, I wanted to acknowledge that this is, or that we're rapidly approaching the end of my time in this role. And as a part of that, we have already started the process to look for my successor. I will be announcing who our, or yes, who our recommendation for that person will be tomorrow at the BSAC meeting. And BSAC will vote them through. So we hope to come back with the confirmed candidate soon. And that is all for today. Thank you.
Very much, Ms. Reyes. Are there any questions from the committee for Ms. Reyes? Mr. O'Neil?
Not necessarily a question, Ms. Reyes. Thank you for your report. More of a comment. I am in awe at how BSAC has grown the past two years. And, you know, I'm sitting here thinking, this is a chicken and egg situation, right? Is it because we have a superintendent who is now so willing to listen and, and, and hear the voice of the students? Or is it because of the work that BSAC has done that the superintendent says, hey, I better listen and work with this group, right? It's, it's, it's a confluence, I think, of two rivers merging together beautifully into a incredibly powerful force. And so, you know, it hurt a little bit when the superintendent said a few minutes ago, she's looking forward to a meeting with BSAC because she gets her best ideas there. Because, you know, we kind of hope that the school committee gives her a few good ideas as well. But it's also a testament of work that BSAC has done. And I remember two years ago when we were presented that we were presented that the question was, you were going to be our representative, and Elvis was going to be a backup, and then, you know, maybe you were going to alternate. Well, he did a fantastic job on the superintendent search committee. But the work you have done as BSCAC's representative of the school committee has just been phenomenal. You are thoughtful, you articulate, you are caring, you do your research. I think you have seen every one of your fellow members, and yes, we are your fellow members, treat everything you say with the utmost seriousness. We listen. You have moved our thinking in many occasions because of your approach to the work, as well as your colleagues. I know in many cases, what you were presenting is the result of discussion with your colleagues on BSCAC. And I'm so proud of the fact that you now represent all the high schools in the city. We were saying all along, when BSCAC got to that point, you were a much more powerful voice, and we're seeing that in action now. So it has been an honor and a privilege to serve in this committee with you for the past two years. And I can't wait to see great things come out of Columbia University.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Ms. Robinson?
Yes, just want to echo what Mr. O'Neil has said. Thank you, Evelyn. Thank you for all the work you and BSCAC have done and continue to do, not just for the young people, but really to help us understand what's really the most important things that students need, and to push us in our thinking also to support those needs. So thank you.
Vice Chair.
Thank you. I also just want to say that it's been really nice, as I've been on the school committee, to watch BSCAC grow. I have to say that I, I, I always had some reservations when there were times on BSCAC where it was only exam school students. And I think that's, that's not representative of all the students. And so I do commend BSCAC for working extremely hard over the past few years to really reach out to other schools. And I encourage, I continue to encourage BSCAC to recruit students from our alternative education schools and our community-based alternative education schools, because they bring a different perspective and different perspectives, as we know, are really good. So thank you, guys. Thank you for the work on climate change, all the work you guys have done this year. I mean, I think it's just so important. So I do thank the students. And I thank you, especially Evelyn. You have been wonderful to work with, always, like everyone said, really just thoughtful questions that you have, really just very, you know, thinking out of the box and really asking some tough questions. And we will definitely miss you. I know we'll, we'll have like an amazing replacement, but we will miss you. And I did talk to Elvis. He called me yesterday, speaking of Elvis. And he called to, to tell me thank you, or he was doing some project, I guess, looking at the highlights of his year. And so a highlight was the search committee. He might have been the only one that thought it was a highlight at all those meetings that we had. But anyway, I thank him as well for his service. And I definitely thank you, Evelyn, and we will miss you. And, you know, please do keep in touch with us and let us know how you're doing.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And I skipped over Dr. Rivera.
No, just again, a quick shout out and congratulations to you, Evelyn. It really has been an inspiration to see a young Latina leader and as strong social justice warrior. You really are an inspiration. And only known you a short time, but will forever be impressed. And just wish you the best. I know there's going to be really great things coming your way. And so, so proud and honored. Thank you. Best of luck.
I want to thank you all for your support, first and foremost, and for me in this role. Yeah, I, this has been a learning experience, all in all, all around. But it's been good. I think I've been pushed to think of things outside of the box. And certainly, this is different than the normal, or the usual, you know, stomping and shouting that I like to do, boots on the ground type of stuff. So yeah, this is, this has been an amazing experience, and I want to thank you all for being a part of it.
Well, thanks once again, Ms. Reyes. And there's nothing more that I can say other than what my fellow members have already said. So I will just join in doing a brief round of applause for you. Okay. Well, we hope to see you at the next meeting, but understand, we might not. But we will be in touch. And we also look forward to honoring your fellow BSCAC seniors, including Mr. Rodriguez, who was mentioned a little bit earlier as well, potentially at a future meeting or at the citywide graduation ceremony that's coming up on Channel 5 in a few short weeks. So move on now. Ms. Sullivan, we'll move to general public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but refer to the superintendent for later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak, and I remind you when you have one minute remaining, and then 30 seconds. Those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign the turn to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson for testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name and affiliation before you begin. And as Mr. LaCanto said earlier, if you can please make sure that you are signed into Zoom using the same name with which you signed in for public comment. That'll help us identify you. If you can please virtually raise your hand when I say your name, that will help us as well. We have 14 speakers this evening, and we'll begin with Yamaris Matias, followed by Mariosca Medina and Denise Mercedes. Ms. Matias with us?
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, how you doing? Okay, hi, everyone. Welcome. Okay. So should I start?
No.
Okay, all right. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Yamaris Matias. I'm Anthony Dominguez' mother, a fourth grade student of Oshaguardin K.A. High School. I'm here today to explain what I'm not agree with the memory and understanding between elementary and secondary education in NCAPs and SANS. For these particular reasons, BPS has been targeted by the NCAPs readers with the lowest qualification. And as a parent, I think our voices should be heard. As an immigrant, I know the difficulties I went through when I came to this country, with a different culture, language, education, was a big challenge for me. When they came, when they came to my education, I was one of the many students who did not have a high school diploma back on 2003. Even though I passed all my classes with the same grades, just because I didn't get a extra point, I don't think it was fair. Because more than the 40% of these exams is not even covered by the teachers at school. I don't know who the people who's in charge of these exams are, but I think they should be the teachers who are the ones who teaching our kids during the school year. And also, for kids with disabilities, they should be special exams based on what they need. In conclusion, I think as a parent, we should have a chair on the table to discuss a fair education for young, well, children. Because our children are the future of the country. Let them grow with the knowledge they deserve. Not today, Mo U, just for a fair education for children, and just to parents to have a place on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matias. My next speaker is Mariosca Medina. Ms. Medina with us?
Señora Mariosca Medina está presente, está con nosotros.
Sí, aquí estoy.
Yes, I'm here.
Please go ahead.
Ya puede comenzar, señora Medina.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Mariosca Medina. Antes de iniciar, quiero darles las gracias por permitirme mi participación en esta reunión.
Good afternoon. My name is Mariosca Medina. First of all, before I start, I would like to appreciate the opportunity you've given me to be part of this meeting.
Tengo dos niñas que estudian en las escuelas públicas de Boston, las cuales tienen siete y cinco años.
I do have two girls. They're going to the Boston Public Schools, and their ages are five and seven years old, respectively.
Ambas estudian en la Herly, y es una excelente escuela, ya que mis hijas han aprendido bastante.
They both go to the Herly School. Herly School is an excellent school, providing they have been learning a lot, I have to say.
En base a eso, estamos solicitando más apoyos y recursos para las escuelas públicas en las diferentes áreas.
Therefore, we are actually requesting more support, more resources for the public schools in different areas.
Ya que no vemos la inyección de ayuda, sino que no las quieren, no las quieren retirar.
Considering that we're not seeing resources being added, on the other hand, resources are being taken away.
Debemos de pensar en la situación que estamos atravesando a nivel mundial antes de tomar cualquier decisión que afecte la educación y el desarrollo de nuestros niños.
So we do have to consider and think the situation we're going through at the world level, this crisis we're going through, because every decision making will be impacting the education of our children.
La escuela Herly ha sido siempre una buena, ha sido siempre una buena, un buen modelo. Siempre ha tenido muy buenos maestros, y soy testigo de esto.
The Herly School has been always a great model. There's been always great teachers there, and I am a witness of those great teachers teaching there.
Porque mis hijas han tenido una buena formación académica. Sin embargo, pienso que el distrito educativo...
My daughters, I have to say, had a very good academic education there. However, I do believe that the educational district...
Debe aprobar programas que motiven la participación latina en las escuelas de la Herly.
The educational district, they do have to foment, they do have to promote programs that incorporate and that promote the participation of the Latin community there for decision making.
Ya que el 70% de los estudiantes son latinos.
We have to consider that 70% of the population going to this school is of Latin origin, they're Latinos.
De tal manera, los padres hispanos tenemos más participación en el futuro y desarrollo de nuestras escuelas. Muchas gracias y buenas tardes.
Therefore, by having this opportunity, the Latino parents will have a voice, and we will be able to participate more proactively in the future development of our schools. Thank you very much for allowing me to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Medina.
Muchas gracias, señora Medina.
De nada.
Next, we'll hear from Denise Mercedes. Ms. Mercedes with us?
Denise Mercedes, señora Denise, se encuentra con nosotros. Señora Denise Mercedes, se encuentra con nosotros. Yes, I am here. Ya puede comenzar, Denise. Yo soy el intérprete. Un par de frases, pausa, y yo le voy a interpretar. The interpreter is explaining the dynamics of consecutive interpreter. Ya puede comenzar, señora.
Okay. Buenas tardes. Dios bendiga a todas y todos. Gracias por haberme cogido para testificar en esta importante reunión.
Good afternoon to all. God bless you all. And thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to provide testimony in this very important meeting that we have in today.
Mi nombre es Denise Mercedes. Tengo tres hijos en BPS. Soy una madre que trabaja, y no tengo otra manera de que mis hijos asistan a la escuela, que no sea el transporte escolar.
My name is Denise Mercedes. I do have three of my children going to school, and there is no other way for my kids to go to school other than public transportation provided by school.
Nosotras recién llegadas de República Dominicana, estamos pasando por un proceso de adaptación educativa, y esto es muy difícil para los niños.
We just arrived from the Dominican Republic. We are going to the process, the educational process. The education itself has been a very difficult process for the children.
En ese entonces, mi hija tenía nueve años, y de manera muy triste me pedía que no la tuviera al luz.
My girl, she's only nine years old, and in a very sad way, she was telling me not to let her get into the bus.
Lamentablemente, mi hija estaba siendo víctima de bullying. Había otra niña que la insultaba, incluso llegó a denunciarla.
Unfortunately, my girl, she was being a victim of bullying. There was another girl that was insulting her, and to the point that she was hitting her as well.
Pienso que en el bus hacía falta vigilancia.
I do believe that there was a lack of supervision of this transportation.
Cuento esto que pasó en mi familia, porque en mi opinión creo que no es justo en estos momentos las escuelas sean intervenidas.
I do believe that I'm sharing this information, something that happened in the family, because I do believe that there is a lack of supervision and intervention with this regard.
Cuando la realidad es que necesitan los fondos suficientes para seguir adelante, con todos los servicios que brindan a nuestros hijos.
So the truth is that more funding has to be available to be able to provide all the resources and services that our kids need.
Pude darme cuenta que en el acuerdo de DS y BPS, la iniciativa propietaria número cuatro contemplan mejorar el transporte, pero solo apuntan a que los buses vienen centrados.
Apparently, there was an agreement signed, the BPS DC agreement. There is a stipulation, stipulation number four, that they only point at the transportation being on time. That's the only thing that they mentioned there.
No solo es necesitar el tiempo, se necesitan fondos suficientes para que los niños viajen seguros.
It's not only imperative being considered about the time. Funds have to be allocated for the purpose of the children traveling safely in this transportation.
Como madre de BPS, pienso que en estos momentos, y atravesamos por una pandemia, no es tiempo de intervenir las escuelas.
So I do believe that we are going through a pandemic situation and crisis right now. So this is not the right moment to intervene in the schools in this regard.
Debemos concentrarnos en obtener un sistema de transportación más seguro y adecuado para los años escolares tenidentes.
So we do have to concentrate and allocate resources to make sure that we have a safe mode of transportation in order to be able to plan ahead for the years to come.
Porque sabemos que los próximos años tendremos que seguir con el dispensamiento social, ya que el COVID-19 aún no tiene solución.
Because we do believe that the next years, we do have to continue having this social distancing. As we all know, COVID-19 still has not, does not have a remedy or a solution.
Y no hablo solo por la situación que pasamos, mi hija y yo. Hablo por aquellas madres que como yo necesitan...
My man?
I'm only, I'm not talking only about myself. I'm speaking on behalf of all the mothers that are in this need in particular, not only about myself, but only about my daughter.
Ms. Mercedes, have you finished your comments?
Señora Mercedes, ya terminó el comentario. No se escucha.
No.
No, I haven't. No, no, terminado todavía.
¿Puede decirme dónde se quedó?
If you can tell me where, where I did. Estaba diciendo que no solamente usted y su niña. Estaba hablando de las otras madres también. I'm just paraphrasing the last part that she mentioned. Ya le queda poco tiempo. ¿Tiene algo más para decir?
Por lo tanto, les quiero pedir que se enfocen en el mejoramiento del sistema de transporte escolar.
So what I wanted to say, future lack of time, that it is imperative that you concentrate and focus in the improvement of the transportation system that you have currently in school.
Quiero que cada transporte tenga un monitor mandatoriamente.
So it is required that every bus should have a monitor by law.
De esa manera, estaríamos ustedes contribuyendo a establecer el sistema de transporte escolar. Gracias.
So by doing this, you will be contributing to solidifying the public transportation or the transportation provided at schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mercedes.
Muchas gracias, señora Mercedes.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sonia Medina. She'll be followed by Erica Pfeiffer and Jennifer Rios. If you could please raise your hands virtually.
Señora Medina, si puede levantar la mano virtualmente, usted es la siguiente persona en hablar.
Thank you. Ms. Medina with us?
Señora Medina, se encuentra presente.
Ms. Medina?
Señora Medina, nos está escuchando.
Sí, sí, estoy aquí. Gracias. Sí, sí, estoy aquí, gracias.
Yes, I am here. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Okay. Hola, buenas tardes a todas y a todos. Gracias por la oportunidad que me han dado de poder expresarme. Gracias.
Good afternoon, everybody, and I do thank the opportunity you've provided me and allowing me to express myself today. Thank you very much.
Mi nombre es Sonia Medina. Soy madre de dos niños.
My name is Sonia Medina. I am a mother of two children.
Quiero referirme por mi hijo Luis Ángel que está en la escuela Blaiston.
I am going to talk about Luis Ángel, my son. He's going to a Blaiston school.
Mi hijo me pregunta, mami, ¿qué va a pasar con nosotros en la escuela Blaiston? Ya que voy a tener que sentarme separado de mis amigos y vamos a tener un distanciamiento social.
So he asked me the question, what is going to happen to me to us, providing that we're going to have to separate a school? There has to be a social distancing in place. What is going to happen to me, mom? He asked me.
Yo como madre me preocupo porque la escuela no tiene puertas ni paredes adecuadas.
As a mother, I have a legitimate concern with regards to the schools or the classrooms themselves do not have proper windows or proper doors.
Pienso que el distrito debe preparar más las escuelas públicas ya que en el nuevo año escolar será diferente.
So I do believe that the school has to be better prepared, the schools themselves, because the new year to come is going to be different. They have to prepare for this.
Porque el año pasado le pro- le pro- le prometieron puertas y paredes adecuada a la escuela Blaiston y aún no lo han hecho.
Because last year, actually, they made a promise. They said they were going to put new windows, new doors to the Blaiston school and that has not been done yet.
Pregunto, ¿qué pasó con ese dinero que fue aprobado para nuestro, para puertas y paredes adecuada de la Blaiston?
So I do ask this question, what happened to those funds, to that money that was allocated specifically for the purpose of putting windows and walls at the Blaiston school? What happened there?
Porque ahora con más urgencia hay que hacerlo por el COVID-19 para que los estudiantes puedan tener el distanciamiento social adecuado.
It is very urgent to take those precautions considering the COVID-19 for the purpose of being able to implement the appropriate social distancing between students.
Tenemos que pensar en la seguridad y la salud y el bienestar de nuestros hijos.
So we do have to have, we have to think about their safety. We have to think our well-being, the well-being of our kids and their health as well.
Si la escuela Blaiston no tiene puerta ni paredes adecuada, ¿cómo podemos hablar de un distanciamiento social, de una buena educación segura, saludable para el nuevo año escolar?
It is very difficult to talk about a healthy education, an education that is into, that will bring benefits to them if the walls are not appropriate, if the doors are not appropriate, if the social distance is not being able to implement accordingly.
Nuestros hijos tienen derecho a una buena educación de calidad en todos los niveles infantil, primario, secundario y estudios superiores.
For our kids, I do believe that they have the right to equality of education. We're talking about our primary, secondary schools, our high schools and the superior colleges. They do have the right to quality education, all of them, all those categories.
Yo como madre le pido al distrito que, que se enfoque en dar más fondo para que la escuela Blaiston tenga puertas y paredes adecuadas.
So as a mother, I am asking the district to be able to have more funding. So the Blaiston school will be able to have more doors that are appropriate and more walls that are appropriate for this purpose.
La educación no puede ser ajena del dolor y a la desigualdad que están generando el sistema escolar.
The pain and the inequality cannot be ignored and this is actually impacting the school system. It cannot be ignored.
De hecho, es una de las herramientas más eficaces para luchar contra la pobreza, la desigualdad y la injusticia social.
These are actually powerful tools to be able to fight the poor people, the inequality that exists and the poverty. These are two, these tools are critical to implement.
Por favor, le pido como madre que sea, que nuestras voces sean escuchadas para que nuestros hijos tengan una educación mejor, saludable, ya que la escuela Blaiston no cuenta con puertas ni paredes adecuada para el nuevo año escolar. Gracias.
As a mother, I am asking you to please consider this situation, considering that the Blaiston school did not have appropriate doors, did not have proper walls for an appropriate education. It is my voice as a mother and please do consider this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Our next speaker is Erica Pfeiffer.
Muchas gracias, señora Medina, por su declaración.
Ms. Pfeiffer? Ms. Pfeiffer?
Ms. Sullivan, she's in the attendee list. Has anyone unmuted her?
Yes. Unmute is not working at the moment. Ms. Pfeiffer?
Looks like we might have lost her. All right, let's move on to the next speaker.
Here, our next speaker is Jennifer Rios, followed by Marta Bowsmar. Ms. Rios with us? Ms. Rios, welcome.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, members of the school committee, superintendent, superintendent Caselli, BPS staff, students and families. My name is Jennifer Rios. I'm currently the head staff assistant and a parent of a sixth grade student at Boston Green Academy. I am here this evening to speak in support of Boston Green Academy's charter renewal application and urge the committee to please vote in favor of it. As a member of the BGA community, I could not be prouder of the incredible work that the school does on a daily basis. Boston Green Academy staff and families alike work very hard to create an incredible and unique environment that is unlike any other school I have ever experienced, both professionally and as a parent. Everyone in the school, from the headmaster all the way down to the cafeteria staff, really do go above and beyond to make sure that all of our students are taken care of and always have what they need. My son is currently a sixth grade student at Boston Green Academy. Even though my son has had some social emotional challenges due to being autistic, he has grown exponentially in the encouraging, welcoming and loving environment that BGA has provided him. For the first time in his life, he is actually making friendships with peers and connections with staff, two things that were previously very hard for him to do. Boston Green Academy is a very important part of BPS. BGA is the only school in the district that focuses on sustainability and environmental sciences and has done such incredible work in these fields that they were nationally recognized last year in receiving the prestigious U.S. Green Ribbon Schools Award. BGA teachers and staff work very hard to nurture the minds of students and expose them to environmental sciences and professions that they would have otherwise not been aware existed if it were not for our school. BGA encourages students to really express themselves and cultivates opportunities for them to make changes in the world in ways that will impact all of our lives for generations to come. All of the reasons above are why I firmly believe that Boston Green Academy deserves another charter. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Pfeiffer. Oh, excuse me, thank you, Ms. Rios. I see that Ms. Pfeiffer is with us again. Ms. Pfeiffer? Ms. Pfeiffer, can you hear us?
Ms. Sullivan, I believe Ms. Pfeiffer's taken a pass on speaking this evening, so we can continue on with Ms. Bowsmar. Thank you.
Next we'll hear from Marta Bowsmar. Is Ms. Bowsmar with us?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good evening, attendees. My name is Marta Bowsmar. I am in my eighth year at Boston Green Academy as the school nurse. I'm here tonight in support of Boston Green Academy's charter renewal application. I am born and raised in Boston. I currently live with my family in Hyde Park. I'm the proud mother of three beautiful children and my oldest is Ally. She's seventeen and a graduating senior in the class of 2020 at Boston Green Academy. So not only am I the school nurse at BGA, but I'm also the parent of a seventeen-year-old high school graduate who's about to enter the world as an adult. And I am so, so thankful for the education and guidance and support she received while at BGA that I know she has a school community to turn to should she ever need them for anything. We like to say it's BGA for life. Once a member of our community, you're always a member. I'm representing both roles here tonight as a school nurse and a BGA parent and in support of Boston Green Academy's charter renewal application, I urge the committee to please vote in favor of it. BGA is such a special place for me. Over the years, I felt so incredibly lucky to be a nurse in the city that I grew up in, working with middle, high school-aged children. Lucky that I love going to work, but I think now I'm beyond lucky. I got to go to high school again with my own daughter at a school that I love, that loves her, and that now she loves too. And my daughter didn't start at BGA. She was at a different school to start high school, but every Friday when she had a half-day at that previous school, she would pretty quickly show up at BGA. And she got to know the school through me and my relationships with staff and families and students and I could feel myself wanting her to be there. But that would be her decision to make if she wanted it and surely enough, one Friday afternoon, we were driving home and she turned to me and said, "Mom, I want to go to BGA." It was one of my most memorable moments. So now here I am, so grateful for the warmth and kindness the BGA community reflects because my daughter felt it even before she went there because that sparked in her a curiosity and motivation to want to be a part of BGA and to be a part of something special. It doesn't get more memorable than being a high school senior class of 2020, does it now? BGA is special. The love that they've shown to the seniors of 2020 during this social isolation period we find ourselves in. There are staff meetings constantly, how to celebrate the class of 2020. Headmaster emails, phone calls, parent meetings, updates, ideas every few days. Staff members inviting you to create a video to send to the seniors to give them that final extra boost that they can do it. That's BGA and that's community. And BPS in the city of Boston need a school like BGA. We have incredible community partnerships. The Boston Nature Center, where my oldest, Ally, class of 2020, is a youth leader and spent summers as a camper for ten years. My five-year-old attends nature preschool there. Well, the Boston Nature Center teaches in the middle school at BGA about preservation and wildlife. Just one class experience. And I believe BGA deserves another charter. In 2019, BGA was the recipient of the Excellence in School Wellness Award for comprehensive health education, health services, safe and supportive schools. That's a school I'm proud to be a community member of as a parent and as a school nurse. I sincerely, in closing, I sincerely hope that members of the school committee vote to approve our rechattering application and that BGA deserves five more years to continue their great work for the city of Boston. And I want to thank you for all your great work that you do as the school committee. I thank you all and have a good month.
Thank you very much. Our next speakers are Sharon Harrison, followed by Clara Ruiz and Robert Jenkins. Is Ms. Harrison with us? Ms. Harrison?
Yes, good evening. Good evening. My name is Sharon Harrison. It is my pleasure to come to you, before you, this evening. I am a nurse faculty senate member and a school nurse for twenty-six years, twenty-four being at the William Carter School. And I would like to read this before you. Now is the time for the union and employers to come on all issues for returning to school, the American Federation of Teachers. The Boston Public Schools Nurse Faculty Senate is committed to the safety and wellness of Boston Public School students. This is why we advocated, we advocated for decades to provide a full-time nurse in every school. A dream of ours that will become a reality this fall as a result of the recent contract signed by the district and the Boston Teachers Union. However, there is no time to bask in the sun. All nurses are needed now because we face a new formative battle which threatens the safety and well-being of students, staff and community, COVID-19. Today, COVID-19 has dismantled life as we once knew it. Now, mask, hand and environmental hygiene, as well as social distancing, are the new mantras that we practice in the hopes of keeping COVID away. But modern history reveals that nurse scientists have helped to identify, adopt the use of practices to mitigate the spread of diseases over the decades. Because of these protocols are part of our modern nursing practices, your BPS nurses grasp these concepts and con- oh my goodness, and concomitantly understand childhood growth and development in, as it pertains to, to education. Our daily work with children and mitigating issues of children with chronic asthma, diabetes, inclusive children with special healthcare needs who have a myriad of healthcare challenges. Currently, we have approximately a hundred and fifty school nurses who, whose strengths and weaknesses is knowing of their build, knowing of the buildings. These nurses know the best locations for isolation spaces to hold children and staff if needed. We know where maintaining hand hygiene is going to be a challenge to, and running water may not be in the vicinity. We know what safe local distancing could look like and how to support the practice. I could go on and on that professional healthcare providers, your BPS nurses, have been trying, studying, researching, following COVID-19 updates in Massachusetts and throughout the world. In fact, the BPS current nurses are currently using, working for Department of Public Health, tracking the virus. As a body of nurses, your BPS nurses possess a visionary process to problem-solve how cautiously, safely and scientifically reopening schools while living in COVID-19. No single group could possibly think of all the steps we need to take to ever, to, to, for every school to open, reopen. Boston Public School nurses alone cannot ensure the resources are available or that the resources that are available are used properly to keep students safe.
Ms. Harrison, you're well past your time. If you would please summarize. Thank you.
Okay. However, we can and do commit to working together with a entity who is willing to join with our pursuit. In closing, I rephrase the AFT slogan. Now is the time for the school committee, educators, school nurses and administrators to work on all issues for reopening schools. The nurse faculty respectfully request a seat at the table to collaborate, plan and implement the safe return of all Boston public schools into schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Our next speakers are Clara Ruiz, Robert Jenkins and Mike Heishman. Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Clara Ruiz and I'm a student at Bunker Hill Community College. A doctoral recipient and team leader. I am passionate about this topic because I am an immigrant myself. To our knowledge, since 2015, BPS has filed at least a hundred and thirty-five incident reports that were made available to ICE. This is real. Tangible sample of the school to present to the transportation pipeline in Imo's end. Seen and unafraid educators having worked on providing a solution for this issue and have gone in close partnership with other organizations to address an inclusive solution. Today, the superintendent, two members of the school committee and other representatives from the central office heard our commitment to joining the working group and writing and presenting a policy in unison. We advise that the working group be presented with a learn without fear policy as a base for the work that we will do together. It is the most comprehensive inclusive policy presented so far. Our four pillars center transparency, accountability, oversight and training. While this is the right step in making a strong policy, I think it is important to have individuals that represent a diverse constituency. Many of those in which seen and unafraid educators will recommend and who we think are important to be at these meetings. It is great that we will have a working group to touch upon different perspectives and feedback. But also keep in mind that those who have researched draft a strong policy and have worked in this issue for years should be the ones leading that conversation and working group. On March 12, 2020, Superintendent Caselli said, "We want to ensure that our schools are safe places for them to go, that the only thing they need to worry about is a test and essay, not worrying about whether they're going to have a data share inappropriately." Our learn without fear policy is exactly what the central office and the community have been asking for. So why has there been pushback installing to adopt our policy? have been asking for. So why has there been pushback installing to adopt our policy? We share our commitment in working with the district to solve this problem. I would like to highlight that we intend on seeing this through to the end. We want to support the district in rewriting, rewriting the all MOU with BPD. We want to be part of the work done to create comprehensive training for Boston Police. We want to build a solid working relationship with the district to make BPS a daco-friendly and safe space for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruiz. Next, we hear from Robert Jenkins. Mr. Jenkins with us? Mr. Jenkins?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, welcome.
I'm sorry. Yes, I would like to, well, I would like to thank you all for attending. School committee members, Dr. Casselius. I just have to just say this, Dr. Casselius, you and your admin team and everybody at BPS should get major kudos during this coronavirus and still giving us what our students and families need, a strong leader who's definitely demonstrated that style during this crisis and still going on to the day-to-day operations of the Boston Public Schools. I am here for Madison Park. I sit on, I'm a school site council member, also on the hiring committees for what we're finally getting at Madison. You guys know that I've always talked about Madison, and we're finally going to reap those rewards. We have teachers, a diverse group of teachers, who definitely want to be at Madison. So that is a major plus. And what, you know, during this transition, I will be working closely with the district as I always have. We're going in the right direction. The Alumni Association does back what is going to happen at Madison. My only issue is or caution, the middle school kids do not have a voice. And that is a voice that is not represented. And I would strongly put this towards Ms. Reyes, Reyes, that you gotta, you gotta listen to those kids because there are no more middle schools. So sixth, seventh, and eighth graders need to be heard. You have to ask them what they think about with this new change, because they're going to be going, they're going to be in a whole different atmosphere. So you definitely have to let them know because they don't have any teachers now. And it's all new to them. And also too, you have to remember, they can be potential BSAC members. BSAC only does freshmen and up. You might want to start training them. So when they get to be freshmen, they can be BSAC members. Other than that, I don't have too much to say that also too, around the concerns around meals. I volunteer with the YMCA, and we're at the Matter Hunt. We're giving away 340 to 360 meals a day. Also, on the weekend, on Fridays, we give meals for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. There is a serious need out there, and we're, and we're seeing a major increase the longer this goes. So whatever we're still doing now, we got to make sure, like, you know, with the Chrome, with the Chromebooks and getting the necessary resources for all our students and families. One thing that I heard about too is that if you have, what's being done with multi-kids in the household, because there's only one Chromebook per student. So that's something that I've been hearing with a lot of parents I've been talking about. Again, I'm taking my daily walk, safe distancing. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Next, we'll hear from Mike Heishman, and he'll be followed by Anne Malone and John Mudd. Mr. Heishman?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Mike Heishman, Dorchester, member of BGA, which stands for Boston Education Justice Alliance. I have admired and respected Dr. Casselius's strong criticism and opposition to standardized tests. Way back when September 19th, she called for a moratorium on standardized district testing. Recently, I've been thrilled by good news from DESI, DESI's Department of Elementary Secondary Ed, that MCAS tests have been canceled. As everybody knows, MCAS stands for the Massachusetts Child Abuse System. I'm thrilled that it's been canceled for this year, and I hope that one day soon, it'll be buried forever. It's unfair, discriminatory, and racist, and not valid. Thank you, Dr. Casselius, for addressing the testing for grades three through 11. I was very surprised about it. I'm glad that you gave a little bit of a reason about it, but it seems like a retreat from your statement on September 19th. Once again, I'm addressing you about the BPS school deportation pipeline. I've spoken a number of times about this. This has been going on for months. When this first came before the school committee, there was some pushback. And every time I come to a meeting, I expect to hear some progress. And now I hear that finally, that it's going to start, the dialogue with SIM and Unafraid Educators is going to begin, I believe, next week, and a policy will be coming out in August. I'm glad to hear that it's finally moving, but I'm just concerned that this hasn't been a higher priority. Once again, I want to speak against the MOU, the Memorandum of Understanding, signed by our superintendent and Department of Education and Secretary of Education. This is a democratic assault on our public institutions. The agreement that was signed on March 10th never came before the school committee and the public. The kaleidoscope curriculum has never been explained. The schools in Charlestown and East Boston were never asked if they wanted their children to be experimented upon. I once again ask you to tear up this agreement. My final comment is Evelyn, Evelyn, congratulations. Thank you for your leadership. I hope soon you'll be elected school committee. Keep stomping, sister. Keep shouting, sister, and good luck to you.
Thank you, Mr. Heishman. Our next speaker is Anne Malone. She'll be followed by John Mudd and Ruby Reyes. Ms. Malone with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Okay, thank you all very much. I'm a BPS parent of 15 years now. I've, one son's graduated, the other's a ninth grader. I'm also an activist with Surge Boston, showing up for racial justice. And we're a partner organization with BGA, the Boston Education Justice Alliance, also very active with the Citywide Parent Council. And I do want to suggest that I can bring back to that body, helping to do the outreach through our ongoing project to reach every school student, I mean, School Parent Council about the summer learning opportunities. So I'll get in touch with Monica Roberts and whoever else would make sense to, you know, collaborate on that. I did want to also kind of lift up the notion that the schools can't solve all these problems. So many families are experiencing crises, economic coping, you know, problems coping, which preceded the COVID pandemic and now are worsened. So we need to really collaborate across sectors in society and really get at fundamental root causes of a lot of these problems. But one thing in terms of reaching out to students maybe that we haven't engaged is the BCYF, the Boston Center for Youth and Families. I know my boys really were very active in the basketball league, in our local community center. So maybe if BPS can coordinate with staff there, they might know some of these students who, you know, BPS hasn't been able to connect with. They might know some of the families, the adults, and have a current phone number. And I wanted to give a thank you to the BPS team. You know, I've been involved with helping with the food deliveries and just really inspired by the creativity there, but also heartbroken about the extent of the need. So we've really got to work collaboratively at the fundamental root causes. I wanted to give a shout out to many of the school nurses, I'm also a nurse myself, that have set up virtual nurses offices online for students and families to get information and to collaborate with that part of the school team, community. I know the EMK, the Edward M. Kennedy Health Careers Academy, and the Trotter School have those and probably others. I also wanted to speak to please put the MOU on hold. It just feels very disingenuous that that was signed the day that schools went into shutdown with the pandemic, and there's been no discussion, like transparency, about what the kaleidoscope method is. So I want to really, you know, give my support, very vigorous recommendation or demand that that be put on hold. And then, of course, coming back to the comprehensive health education, that really should exist now more than ever, in a holistic approach, physical, social, emotional. I wanted to give voice to maybe Mental Health Awareness Month. Thank you, Superintendent, for lifting that up. I come from a family that's been challenged with serious and persistent mental illness. I lost my sister to complications from her mental illness. And when I was in high school, my mother was hospitalized with suicidal challenges. And, you know, that goes to why we need comprehensive health education and teaching students coping strategies and the intersectionality of substance misuse, and really being there and having students given as many supports as possible to cope with life's challenges, because you don't know what hand, you know, life is going to deal you genetically and environmentally. So I do want to, you know, really encourage the school committee and the administration to put the resources, you know, put your money where your mouth is. The words are in the policy book that comprehensive health education exists, but it's not being done. And-
Ms. Malone, if you could please summarize your past your time. Thank you.
The last thing is, teachers are feeling a lot of pressure about the data on performance evaluation. So I hope that, you know, there's a lot of respect and appreciation for the incredible work our teachers are doing, and to look carefully at what that dashboard is. And then the very last thing, I hope nurses are involved with the reopening task force, because that would be insane if school nurses aren't part of that working group. Thank you very much for all the hard work everyone's doing. I appreciate it greatly, as do the other parents in the BPS community that I'm part of. Work-
Thank you, Ms. Malone. Next, we hear from John Mudd, and he'll be followed by Ruby Reyes. Mr. Mudd?
Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. I asked to speak tonight to highlight the issue of the large numbers of students that were not being able to participate in remote learning. And I can only reinforce the concerns that Michael O'Neill and other members of the committee have expressed about this issue tonight. Prior to the Globe, the report that the school committee received last week, two weeks ago, his last meeting, had some very stark data. There was a graph that showed that fully one-third of blacks and Latinos had no logins to Clever, that one-quarter of blacks and Latinos had no days logged into Google Classroom. And this data is not included reports on English learners, on students with disabilities, much less English learners with disabilities, which would likely be even worse. The data do indicate how important it is to understand why this happening, is happening, and to develop strategies to reduce the lack of engagement. The superintendent mentioned some proactive steps that she and her team have taken in creating student support teams at each school, and a commitment to develop individual success plans for each at-risk student. I would hope that we would use these teams and those plans as a way to really understand more in-depth what the real problems are. What are we learning from the outreach at each school about which supports students, blacks, Latinos, English learners, and families need to take advantage of remote learning? What are we learning about the training and support teachers need to be proficient in guiding remote learning? What specific actions are planned to deal with these lessons learned? It's obviously critically important we come up with answers to these questions, because remote learning will continue in the summer and likely in some blended form in the next school year. Some say there are opportunities we shouldn't miss in this situation. The Equity Roundtable heard a presentation about a campus without walls last Friday. This is an eloquent statement of a vision for remote education, but it had no discussion about the equity challenges this approach would face, and how to create the preconditions for success that will be necessary. Otherwise, remote learning is likely to increase the already large opportunity and achievement gaps that currently exist in BPS. We're not the first to deal with this issue of distance learning. Perhaps there are lessons and best practices we can find from local colleges, universities, and others, businesses who have faced this issue for many years. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd. Our final speaker is Ruby Reyes. Is Ms. Reyes with us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Ruby Reyes. I'm the Director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance, and I wanted to again thank Dr. Casselius and BPS for supporting family needs during this pandemic. However, we are hoping for an explanation of how things are moving forward, not just in relation to COVID, but what feels like a train of transparency that's fallen off the rails. On September 19, 2019, Dr. Casselius placed a moratorium on all district-required testing. In the memo was the explanation to shift attention from executing the status quo to reflecting upon our practice. This is an incredible decision, and for many of us, a sigh of relief. So what happened? During the pandemic, some families were receiving regular communication, while others had to wait for the district to develop a plan. While BPS was consulting with Harvard on curriculum, teachers were figuring it out. Now the district wants to test students, while families are still dealing with the trauma of sheltering in place, parents losing jobs, family members dying, and everyone trying to figure out how to help their children log onto computers and going through assignments in a new virtual world. Testing now in the midst of these traumatizing times will do harm. At the very least, allow for some semblance of routine to return to the next school year. Educators who have been figuring it out should be trusted to assess and monitor student learning during the school year. Educators already know which students have fallen behind and who they are worried about. We don't need a standardized test to tell us what we already know. On March 10, the state's Memorandum of Understanding was signed with no community process. Because the implications of this document is a constant threat of receivership, this decision did not need to be made on the cusp of a pandemic. We have not heard what the process will be around the 60 days of negotiations that began on May 18, when the MOU postponement expired. Then came the decision to move principals around. Having a principal suddenly disappear dramatically impacts an entire school community. Parents and educators have been sidestepped in leadership selection. These decisions were made with no transparency. Then Dr. Casselius announced at a school committee meeting that concerned teachers could meet with her directly instead of giving testimony at school committee. During all of this time, the student information policy that was developed by Student Immigrant Movement and Unafraid Educators and vetted by ACLU attorneys has not been adopted. It upholds the safety of our students and has been developed by the community. People wanting to give testimony on this matter were emailed and encouraged not to do so because it was not on the agenda at the school committee meeting that night. What we need is the district to stop doing harm and reflect on the most recent practice of saying one thing and doing something completely different. People come to school committee to give testimony because they have major concerns, and we are being encouraged not to do so. How does this practice cultivate trust? These unilateral decisions create further trauma in an already traumatizing situation. Communication with communities requires an explanation of how, and alert altering the how based on the feedback of the community. We're working on it, is not an explanation. We ask you to reflect on your practices and renew commitment to real transparent communication and input from the community. And remember the goal of rebuilding trust and valuing stakeholder input as described in the strategic plan. Stakeholder voices need to be cultivated and incorporated into planning and not dismissed. Thank you.
Please summarize. Thank you.
I just finished.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Mr. LaClonda, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Thanks, Ms. Sullivan. Moving on now to, to a series of votes this evening. I believe we have three votes on our agenda. And the first action item is a vote regarding the district's participation in the Massachusetts School Choice Program for school year 2021. The committee held a hearing on this issue earlier this evening. The superintendent has recommended that the Boston Public School is hereby withdraw from the Massachusetts School Choice Program for school year 2021, based on a number of factors, including student assignment issues, space limitations, cost implications, and decisions of school committees and neighboring communities. This is a process that we've used for a number of years, as my fellow members will recall. I'll open it up now to the committee for any final questions or comments. I'll open it up now to the committee for any final questions or comments. Hearing none. Before we take a vote, I want to be clear once again, and I'll ask, as I'm reading this brief statement, that my fellow members unmute their microphones so that we can move to a vote expeditiously. Before we take a vote, a quick reminder that a yes vote means that the district hereby agrees not to participate in the choice program. So again, a yes vote would mean that we would remove ourselves from the Massachusetts School Choice Program, which has been the consistent selection of the district for decades. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to withdraw from the Boston Public, excuse me, withdraw the Boston Public Schools from the Massachusetts School Choice Program for school year 2021. Mr. O'Neill, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, may I please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our next action item is a charter renewal request for the Boston Green Academy, which is a Horace Mann in District Charter School. You'll recall that at our last meeting, Boston Green Academy Headmaster, Mr. Matt Holzer, as well as Mr. Alex Chu, the Chair of the BGA Board of Trustees, presented an overview of the BGA Charter Renewal Application. I'll take a moment to thank Mr. Holzer and Mr. Chu for providing additional responses to our, the committee's data requests in the interim. I'll now open it up to the committee for any final questions or comments.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. O'Neill.
I just want to thank the headmaster and the chair last week in particular for the conversation around their willingness to work with the district and be proud of the plans as, one, as we change grade configurations and try to change, try to consolidate down to a more manageable level of grade configurations, which I think doing so will also free you up to give you the physical space to make those last couple of changes to meet the Mass Core requirements as well. So kind of the conversation around two of those things. I know the school's made a lot of progress the past couple of years. I'm glad you've gotten rid of the other issues that were facing you with the state probation. And I know academic performance, particularly for a subset of students in years and by race, continues to be an issue. And I encourage you to continue to focus on that as much as possible as well. But I thank you for what you presented last week and your willingness as a independent or school with autonomy to work with the district on those key issues. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Are there further questions or comments around the committee? Well, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve Boston Green Academy's Horace Mann in District Charter Score Renewal Application for the period 2021 through 2026, as recommended by the superintendent.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Any discussion or objection to that motion? Ms. Sullivan, may I please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, just a quick question before you speak. I'm sorry. Did the BTU approve it as well? Sign the agreement? I apologize for not asking that ahead of time.
Yes, I believe so. Mr. Holzer, did you want to speak to that specifically?
Yes, thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Thank you, Chairman LaCanto. Yeah, we've been in contact with President Jessica Tang, and they indicated their support earlier today. And we're very grateful for that.
Has she signed the agreement? Are you aware?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry.
Thanks, Mr. Holzer and Chairman Chu. Really appreciate your presentation over the two weeks ago, as well as your commitment to continuing to move forward with BGA in the, in the Boston Public School system. We look forward to celebrating your continued improvement and success on behalf of our students.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and Superintendent and the entire committee. We appreciate the continued support.
Best of luck. We'll move on now to our final vote this evening, which is a superintendent's recommendation to suspend the district's promotion and retention policy and the graduation policy for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year, which is this current school year. As you recall, this recommendation was based in response to the district-wide school closures, school building closures, I should say, that occurred in March due to the COVID-19 health emergency. You will also recall that the superintendent presented this request to the committee at our May 13th meeting as part of her update on the district's remote learning plan. I'll now open it up once again to the committee for any final questions or comments.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, Mr. Chair, could we just get an explanation, please, of what particularly is being asked now? Maybe if Ms. Sullivan could potentially read a draft recommendation, if that's okay, Mr. Chair? I just want to be clear on which particular policies and for how long.
So specifically, the promotion and retention policy and the graduation policy are the two policies that are being suspended, and they are being suspended for the remainder of the current school year.
Thank you.
2019, 2019, 2020.
Thank you.
Further questions? Well, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to suspend the district's promotion and retention policy and the graduation policy for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year.
Done, moved.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or objection to that motion?
Mr. Chair, I again apologize for asking questions. When we're suspending a policy, should we also not be saying what the, either what the implications are or that we're giving the superintendent latitude to decide what the, what the, you know, what the graduation and retention policy will be? Because it sounds like the vote is just simply to suspend the policy.
Well, that's correct, but I believe the superintendent went through specifically what it is that she intends to do in her presentation last two weeks ago, excuse me. So do you have a specific question about what it is that's part of that specific suspension that maybe the superintendent can loop back on?
I think it's just more that if we're voting on a policy to suspend a policy, shouldn't we ask the second part of that, say, and grant the superintendent latitude, you know? You know, you see what I mean about filling that sentence out?
No. I mean, if she doesn't have a, if we're suspending a policy, we don't need to write a new policy on the fly, if you will. We have a presentation from the superintendent that speaks specifically to what she's intending to take forward as a result of this temporary policy suspension. So I, I think it might be a little, it might be problematic at this point to write specifically what are the express powers that we'd be granting her. I mean, that's essentially writing a new policy. I believe we understand what her limited exceptions are going to be. We're, and you know, just briefly, we're not going to be retaining anyone this year. There are grades as part of the, that policy that will be further worked on, the grading policy, excuse me, worked on, and then the graduation policy as well, which speaks to how students will be conferred degrees as a result of their performance in this last semester. So superintendent, it sounded like you want to speak up a little bit. Maybe you can elaborate a little bit further.
Yeah, I just, as of the recommendations that were made from DESI, part of that, and then our remote learning plan, obviously attendance policy had issues in it where it said that if students missed three days, then they would not get a credit and they would fail the class. So that's not possible during this remote learning time. The MCAS was suspended at the state level, so there's a new determination for graduation based on DESI guidance. Then in terms of retention, we have the plans for, parents can still choose to retain their students and work with their teachers on that. But we thought at this time, the core value was to do no harm for students, given the very difficult nature of this pandemic. And so we will work with them on our summer school to get them up to grade level. And so those, those are really the key pieces, and then our grading system was shifted and changed as part of our remote learning planning.
Yes, thank you, Superintendent. So, Mr. Chair, my objection is not to what the superintendent is going to do in place of us suspending the policy. What I might pointing out is that we are the policymaking body, and to merely pass a policy saying we are suspending these policies for the course of this year, there's no if then, that we're not saying what we're going to do. And since we continue to be the policymaking board, I would suspect that we would either, because otherwise there is no graduation policy if the graduation policy is suspended for the rest of the year. And we are the policymaking board. So I would think we would say we are suspending the current requirements and, and granting the superintendent power, you know, on an interim basis to decide them for the rest of this current year. You see, and I know I'm getting, I'm wordsmithing here. I apologize for this. And again, it has nothing to do with what the superintendent is intending to do. I'm trying to respect the authority that we have as the policymaking board.
Ms. Sullivan, may I please read the, the resolution that's before the body?
Sure. So, one moment. So ordered that the Boston School Committee, in accordance with the recommendations of the superintendent of schools, hereby approves the suspension of the following Boston Public School policies for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year in response to the district-wide school closures due to the COVID-19 health emergency, the promotion and retention policy, and the graduation policy. That's the draft before you.
Okay. Mr. O'Neill, what would you suggest?
It would just that we have the if-then statement of, you know, what happens? So we are suspending it and granting the superintendent temporary authority to replace or to make specific changes as recommended, as recommended. I'm just, I'm just trying to help close it out there versus just simply saying we're suspending those policies. And then therefore, if it was suspended them, there is no policy. I'm sorry for wordsmithing, and I know you're the lawyer, so you're even better at this than I am, but.
Yeah, and I'm just having trouble understanding where to edit this because I don't have this written in front of me. And I was hoping that if you, you might have had this open so that you could suggest some specific language to, to address your concerns, so.
I don't unfortunately, but just reading off of what Ms. Sullivan said, could we potentially just say right towards the end and replace it with the superintendent's or grant the superintendent, grant the superintendent the authority to make specific changes as outlined, you know, to those policies?
So I'm gonna. I'm sorry. Is there somebody else?
Yeah.
Dr. Coleman?
Basically, grant the superintendent the authority in this interim period to determine appropriate standards for graduation. And then that's, and that's a time limited, as the policy, the suspension is time limited, so that authority. But we need, I do, I agree with Mr. O'Neill that we need to articulate that, that, that we are giving her the authority to determine what graduation can and look like. Otherwise, it's way too ambiguous for everybody and, and it'd become very difficult. Certainly for the few cases where so may dispute an outcome. Unless we're saying there's no standards for us to get the diploma.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Ms. Sullivan, I'm going to recommend that we insert the word temporary in the first sentence of this order as I'm reading it. And that would connote that this suspension, these two policies are being suspension, suspended, excuse me, a temporary basis. And in the second sentence that follows the specific policies, the school committee would hereby grant the superintendent the temporary authority during this current school year.
Mr. Chair, but if we grant the superintendent the temporary.
Writing this out if, if you don't mind. Thanks.
Yeah, sure.
To, so to fashion appropriate fixes, you know, fixes isn't appropriate policy language.
To adjust it, to adjust as necessary.
Okay. Have you ever watched somebody edit legal language on live TV? I'm sure this is riveting for our, our ratings. So I'm going to read off what I've tried to quickly edit here on the fly. Ordered the school committee, in accordance with recommendations of the superintendent, hereby approves the temporary suspension of the following policies for the remainder of this current school year in response to COVID-19. Number one, the promotion-retention policy. Number two, the graduation policy. The school committee hereby grants superintendent the temporary authority during this current school year to fashion appropriate standards in lieu of these policy requirements.
Perfect.
All right. I earned my stipend today. Ms. Sullivan, you have that recorded?
I do.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table, and we have the motion hereby amended but through the objection of Mr. O'Neill. Do we have the assent to the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
And
Yes.
I know our, we have our legal counsel, our legal advisor on the call as well, Ms. Lazat. I have a previously called on her. Well, we've been working on this, but I did want to give her a brief moment to chime in and, and give her further opinion on whether or not the edits that have been discussed here are recommended in light of what we're trying to do here.
I think they're appropriate, and I would recommend them.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lazat. Okay, so we have a motion on the table. We have it amended. And I suppose I should ask for a new motion to go back and make sure I use the right language here. I want to entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to suspend the district's promotion and retention policy and the graduation policy for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year, as hereby amended by our recent discussion in committee. So, thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Is there any further discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will we please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Well, that was an exciting piece of parliamentary procedure. I hope you all enjoyed that once again. And if I did anything wrong, I'm sure I'll hear from our parliamentarian in the morning. Move on now to our first report this evening, which is a Mass Core Policy Proposal, excuse me. And before I invite Chief Academic Officer Andrea Zayas to present her report, I'd like to invite the superintendent to give her opening comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for making the sausage on the graduation policy and the retention policy. It makes the remote plan, which Andrea Zayas and Christine Landry, Which Andrea Zayas and Christine Landry, who's with her here, um, worked so hard on. So very much appreciate you validating that work. And it helps us to move forward tonight. Um, uh, Chief Academic Officer is going to be presenting the Mass Core. As you know, when, um, I first arrived as superintendent, I began talking about the Mass Core and about the different, um. Requirements in graduation across schools and the inequitable, uh, opportunities that presents to students. And so. We wanted to begin the conversation. Also, as you know, as part of the M O U, this is a requirement, uh, to raise the level of rigor and expectation. It's also going to lend for a strong foundation for the next presentation that Dr. Brugman and Dr. McIntyre will be doing around the planning for the. High school redesign. So, um, without further ado, Ms. Zayas is going to be speaking about the components of the, um. Mass Core, and I think she has some students and others who may also be, um, speaking to it, um, as well.
Thank you, Superintendent Casellius. I am going to share my screen. And Chair LaCanto, Vice Chair Oliver Davila, and esteemed members of the school committee, thank you for the time. This evening to present, to present to you all. I'm honored to be part of the team bringing forward a proposal tonight that has been a long time in the making. Uh, tonight I'm joined by two incredible student leaders, Graciela Berman Reinhardt, who have the pleasure of meeting with, uh. On a monthly basis as part of, uh, the student cabinet, um, and Simon Chernow. And Wellington Matos, who unfortunately couldn't join us tonight for the presentation, um, but we're grateful, Wellington, for your contribution to the presentation. These young people are voices for equity in their schools and in the district. And we're also joined by one of our esteemed secondary headmasters, Dana Brown, of the Dearborn, and my colleague and friend, Christine Landry, Assistant Superintendent of Academics. Together, representing BSAC, the central office, and the headmasters that we worked with throughout this school year. We bring you this proposal for making Mass Core the common graduation requirement across Boston Public Schools. This certainly isn't the first time we've discussed Mass Core, but also will not be the, the last. I really just wanted to take a moment to honor. All of the work that's been done over the years, uh, that's led to us bringing you this proposal tonight. Headmasters and central office have grappled and struggled, and indeed you all have as well. Asked the hard questions, doing mountains of research, crunching numbers, and indeed bringing alternative proposals to this body. Um, and tonight, the conversation shifts from caveats about how and why we cannot do Mass Core. And why our students cannot achieve this and why our schools cannot provide. And really shifts to how we can, as a district, create processes and systems. And how we can propose and pass a policy that demonstrates that all of our students can earn a high school diploma, diploma that means a lot. That carries weight and distinction and demonstrates a level of career life and college readiness. That we've not had before in the district. This is a monumental shift. So tonight specifically, I will share and make the case for Mass Core as an important move for equity in our school district. And you'll hear the school leader perspective and the student perspectives that will be critical to not just the passing of this policy. But the all important subsequent implementation of the policy, which will shape the trajectory of our schools for decades to come. And finally, we'll discuss the outlines for implementation planning that exist within the policy and some next steps as well. And of course, we look forward to answering your questions. So let's start at the beginning. What is Mass Core? Mass Core was designed, uh, and adopted by the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education initially in 2007 and then amended in 2018. And while it's not a statewide requirement, it is, it's a state recommended course of study or program of study. Aligned to a very high expect, set of expectations for high school coursework. Um, and also aligned with college and workforce expectations. It includes the successful completion of four units of English, four units of mathematics. Three of lab-based sciences, three of history, two of the same world language, one of the arts, and five of additional core courses. Uh, some computer science courses can also be substituted for either math or a lab science. And it was developed to increase the likelihood that high school graduates who meet these requirements. Could attend the Commonwealth's four-year public colleges as well as improve their chances of admission to private colleges. And be prepared for the world of work. Our proposal was developed largely through the discussions and the work done this year with the group of headmasters in our P L C. I'll turn it over here to Christine Landry to talk through the process that we use as well as walking you through, through some of the data. That we aim to address through this policy. Christine?
Thank you, Andrea. Um, good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, School Committee Members, and Superintendent Casellius. So as Andrea mentioned, the proposed policy is influenced by community input and engagement from the past several years. Starting with the 2018 and 19 working group, uh, that made important recommendations around both technical and adaptive. Changes that have informed our work this year, including an initial course catalog audit that we performed at the central office level. Um, and also as Superintendent Casellius mentioned, the policy development started this year with her engagement tour where Mass Core was a frequent, frequent topic of conversation with. Both families and with students. Um, we've continued that conversation with BSAC and with B T U, um, throughout the year. Um, another form of engagement has been with our headmaster P L C. We've had a dedicated group of seven pilot turnaround and I B school leaders. Who have dug into the policy iterations as well as, um, what it means, a common understanding of what rigorous instructions can look like across our schools. And then finally, um, we've worked in partnership with D E C during the M O U creation as part of the priority initiative two. So we are proposing that B P S adopts Mass Core as a way to provide greater, more uniform and transparent access to learning opportunities. That are dramatic, that will dramatically increase college career and life readiness for our students. We're proposing that we start with a class of 2025, so our current seventh graders. So that we're both working with urgency and also providing an on-ramp for our schools and our students. We're proposing that we focus on monitoring closing achievement gaps as a key part of our policy. As well as increasing rigor and coherence while keeping the uniqueness of schools that's so important to our communities. So the bell fans and the valedictorian reports confirm for us that there was still deep equity work to do around, um, access to graduation. So therefore, the proposed policy is driven by four principles. Um, the first one is rigor. And again, Mass Core is not about making graduation harder for students, but providing broader access to deep and meaningful learning opportunities. That will help students to succeed without remediation in college. It's also an issue of civil rights. Um, all of our students have the right to the full range of the curriculum. And we need the collective knowledge and experience, um, of the district to provide this. Alignment and clarity is another, um, important piece. Having thirty graduation requirements is complicated for families and we believe that our graduation requirements communicate our expectations. And if we have this many, it, um, can communicate something that's very confusing for families and for students. And finally, we're driven by the idea of college and career and life readiness. So students who experience a rigorous course of study like Mass Core are more likely to graduate from college, um, on time. Go to the next slide. So I've mentioned the array of different graduation requirements, as the superintendent did earlier. There are some other key data points that are driving this work. First is that we're far behind our peers in Massachusetts. And again, part of the reason for that are technical issues that we can fix. Rather quickly. And then there are adaptive issues that we need to dig into in the long term. But then also, once in college, our students' performance is showing us that we haven't done our part as a district fully. To make sure that they are ready for the rigors of the college experience. So our value proposition around Mass Core is that we, if we target opportunity gaps, we're going to have an impact on the achievement gaps. So this slide and the slide that follows it, um, shows Mass Core completion in both the Commonwealth and in the district by rates. And we can say that the same would be true when we pull up, um, put up slides for our English learners and students with disabilities. There is an extreme gap. That we need to face as a district. And so we believe that this proposed policy can significantly close these gaps when implemented thoughtfully. With the appropriate resources and in a way that counts for student assets. As well as several specific conditions for success. So I'm going to turn it over to Dana Brown now, who's going to speak more to those conditions for success.
Thank you, Christine, and thank you, School Committee, for, uh, receiving this report tonight. Done right, this really could be a game changer for the Boston Public Schools and. School leaders want to get this right. And so we really want to, uh, work with district leadership. To make sure that we're working together, going together. We also believe that to do this right. We have to have buy-in from, uh, all, uh, sectors, students, parents, teachers, administrators. And we believe we have to go steady and slow. Uh, that's how you win the race. A lot of times we, we throw things at people quickly and they don't last and they don't work. So we want to make sure that, uh, that doesn't happen. We love the idea that the district is going to take a real, uh, tough and difficult look at costs. Particularly around staffing and spaces and partnerships. Um, we like the idea that some autonomies will stay. Some schools, uh, we heard from, uh, Green Academy today, and that's a perfect example of how a school has a niche. We want to make sure we honor that. Fenway, Dearborn, there are many others like it who have, uh, these particular niches that we, we want to, uh, honor as we move forward. I also want to say on behalf of my fellow headmasters and principals is that, um. We may be attempting to do this during a pandemic and, and we'll be trying to lead schools as we do this. So it's going to be really important that we hear from the school committee and the superintendent as to what the priorities are and, uh. What the balance is around what we should do first, and then what we should do next, and what we should do next. Uh, we can't do it all at once. I also believe that the waiver process that's included in this is really important and we'll hear more about that later. But again, I, I think done well and done right, um, this will help close. An achievement gap that really hasn't gone away in decades. Thank you. And, uh, want to turn it over now to two well-spoken, uh, young people. Simon from Boston Latin Academy and Gracie from Boston Latin School.
Hello, um, everyone. I'm Gracie and. So we at BSAC and the Superintendent Student Executive Cabinet met twice with Ms. Zayas about Mass Core. Where we discussed what implementation would mean and asked questions about some of the details while sharing our concerns about it. Which turned out to be pretty similar to those of the school leaders. Sort of trying to ensure that the agreement only helps schools and doesn't end up backfiring and make sure that what's working currently could stay in the schools. So more specifically, we wanted to make sure that the district would commit to making sure all schools can offer the resources. Equitably so that all students would be able to access what they need to graduate and that students themselves wouldn't be penalized for their school's lack of resources. Um, to meet the requirements for graduation. And then finally, that schools would be able to maintain this level of autonomy that we've seen before. With the Boston Green Academy and other schools that have certain focuses. Um, we wanted to make sure that their individuality could be, could stay present, um, throughout their curriculum.
All right, what's going on, everyone? This is Simon from BSAC as well. So another point that was very important to us that we made sure wanted to be brought up when implementing Mass Core was that. Students had a very, um, we have a powerful and a, and a voice at the decision-making because we know from school to school level. With implementation of Mass Core, although it might be producing a lot of positive things, it could also be done very negatively depending on how it is implemented. So it is, we, the overall goal is to make sure that, you know, we're not getting worse, right? Because like it's supposed to do better. So we don't want to implement a, a plan that's going to end up worsening the schools, right? So, um, especially in terms of schedules, and we feel like students definitely know the schedule the best. So we thought to implement something called the. Implementation Oversight Team that can meet either the fall, the spring before, um, the summer of, but. Meet with, between teachers, staff, administration, students, and students mainly to, um, discuss these issues and make sure that the schedule fits for the student body and. Cause a lot of times decisions are made by headma, headmasters and administrators in the schools and then. It gets brought to the students and they realize that it's not exactly all right fit. So make sure that students are at the deciding table. That way, once it's brought to the general student population, it works right. Yeah.
Simon, did you want to talk about the implementation oversight team?
Yeah, I think I just talked about.
Okay, good. Okay, thanks. Um, okay, great. Thank you, Simon. Um. So next to, um, and, and separate from the policy, we, um, and so we, the policy discusses a number of, um, thirteen, I believe, in particular. Superintendent circulars that need to be created. These essentially become like the wheels on the car that make the policy go. There, they will be codified in these polit, sorry, the processes will be codified in superintendent circulars. Which, um, while not formally district policy, they are the ways that policy gets enacted every day in our district. So. Um, we have circulars right now for, uh, how we do most things as a district. And upon approval of this new graduation requirement. The district will need to produce processes that create equity in application of the policy, including ensuring many of the, well, the bullets that you see here. Um, and that are further enumerated in the policy itself. Um, but to pick up on some of what. My co-presenters were just sharing, ensuring that budgets and probable organizational, um, profit processes are probable or that they're amended in a way that, uh, the, the policy can be enacted. That, um, that there are processes in place to make sure that students who've taken courses out of district, out of state, out of country. Can receive credit for those courses that, um, in very flexible ways, students can, um, receive waivers for courses. Especially if they're enrolled in a C T E program, work and learn, dual enrollment, et cetera. Students who are English learners could be eligible for gaining credit for mastery in their native language. Um, and articulating alternative pathways for graduation for students who are eligible for M C A S alt. All of these. All of these flexibilities, if you will, are permissible by D E C. Um, and allow us to create that really rigorous yet flexible, um, system that will allow for, for school level autonomy in terms of. Thematic courses and the special flavor that makes each one of our schools so very unique, um, and important. Um, to, to, to coexist alongside a really rigorous, um, graduation requirement. Um, we could identify middle grade courses that are aligned to Mass Core rigor and start students on their, on their, uh, trajectory to graduation in grade six or seven if they're. Like at the Dearborn in grade six, um. And other secondary schools at grade seven. Um. And finally, I think in, um, another important piece to note here is that, um, we'll be creating processes so that students can be awarded credit for having demonstrated mastery. Despite not having acquired seat time in a required course. So that'll require for us to, um, collectively collaboratively at that big decision-making table. Determine, um, exactly what students would need to produce, whether that's, um. Testing out or, um, creating a, a project or some other way of demonstrating mastery to be able to, uh, to be awarded credit for. Content that they have already, uh, already mastered. So those will all be, um, codified in circulars. So the implementation plan, um, as Christine was saying earlier, we started an initial course, um, catalog review. We'll go into. catalog review, will go into a process of creating, of a very detailed course audit, including the seven forms of bias tool that was developed by the Office of Opportunity Gaps in previous years. This summer and early fall, our recommendation is that we develop Mass Core support teams for each one of our schools to review and do a full analysis of what, what will it take in terms of budget and staffing to, to get to, to get to implementation, including draft schedules to Simon's earlier, earlier point, and what kind of curriculum and professional learning support would need to be there. That professional learning series is going to kick off, which will include academic counselors, school leaders, teachers, families and students as well, so that all parties are on board and we're building that buy-in prior to clicking go and implementing. To Dana's earlier point, we have so many key partners in this, it's really an all-hands-on-deck approach with Boston Opportunity Agenda and higher ed at the table, who've long been partners in bringing the college career and life readiness vision to life here in Boston. And of course, lots of work to do on the circulars to bring the policy to life. So next steps for us, we're looking forward to a vote from the body on June 10th, which I believe is the next meeting, and then kicking off those support teams that I was just talking about and doing that school-by-school gap analysis. And then as Simon was mentioning, forming a district-wide implementation oversight team to track, to track the work that's happening and provide some transparency and ongoing reports back to the school committee on a quarterly basis throughout next school year for September 21 launch of the availability of Mass Core as the graduation requirement, with the 2025 being the first year that degrees would be conferred with that as the, as the, as the bar. So with that, just want to thank you all, and again, thank you to my co-presenters, not only for tonight, but for all of their hard work and their thoughtful input throughout the months to get us here. And we're looking forward to answering your questions.
Thanks very much, Ms. Zayas, and I want to take a moment just to join you in thanking your co-presenters. First, our Boston Student Advisory Council members, Ms. Chernow and Ms. Berman Reinhardt. I also want to thank Mr. Brown from the Dearborn STEM Academy, he's our headmaster over there, and is also the representative from the professional learning community. Thank you, Mr. Brown. And thank you to Christine Landry, our Assistant Superintendent of Academics and Professional Learning. And Christine, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm really impressed by your ability to definitely present well. Having a few kids playing around in the background, I think we had a few speakers during our public comment that were contending with the same.
I apologize for that, but one of them just brought me headphones, so thank you.
Just, just feels like my day job, that's all.
I was saying that this is actually the example of how hard it is for teachers and parents to do their work when the little ones are home and, and why we might have some difficulty with engagement.
Thank you for that.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'll open it up now to members for questions and discussion, and if you'll virtually raise your hand, or, you know, in real life, raise your hand, and we can get started with our questions. Well, it looks like we'll start with Dr. Coleman.
Thank you, this is very complex, and I, as I was trying to read the material sent, there's a lot, it felt like a lot of topic sentences and theses, and there's a whole deep level of support that I'm looking forward to getting, digging in deeper. So it's, it's kind of hard for me to make sure I caught everything. I particularly appreciate Ms. Zayas, you're, you're mentioning the focus on you brought back in the language of mastery learning, which I think is really critical. And certainly, it seems to me, this approach does address what I think is one of these mysteries about Boston, that you have, you know, all these high schools with different graduation requirements and, and, and the problem of going from high school to high school, different expectations and moving towards some core universal expectations, I think will serve us very, very well, and I'm very excited about that. You know, the whole process that this is going to be built up over a period of time to allow for professional development of the teachers in the classroom who have to now provide these services. I, I, I find that very exciting. I, I have to admit that I, I don't, I don't know yet, and I don't see the materials that I've read or the presentation, how this will lead to closing achievement gaps. Though the, the homogeneity, the clarity, the coherence, I get the opportunity for more rigor across all schools, I get, and I think that's very important. But given, as I understand our data, when we have 30% of our students going from eighth grade to ninth grade, with all the early warning signals for, to fail high school regardless of what the current requirements are, I'm not sure how this approach to what looks to be a fairly similar curriculum that I had in high school, kind of college-oriented, second-step, secondary school-oriented curriculum will address the learning needs of our deeply at-risk student body. So, you know, I, I, I know you can't answer that today, but, you know, I think as we go forward, really what the evidence that this change will actually lead to closing the gap, I don't, I don't see, I don't see it. And maybe I'd need a deeper introduction to the research on this and the other information, more of a, and I realize I may be old-fashioned or just old, but I kind of needed more of a text to kind of track and know what I was reading and maybe reference to research that demonstrates that this curriculum, this improved curriculum, the Mass Core, actually will be gap-closing. How that works, I don't see.
Well, Dr. Coleman, thank you for that question. And before the presenter's answer, I just wanted to add, we had requested some time ago, and I was checking my email to see if I could find it, but maybe I, I just wasn't able to find it. There was a suite of reports that were created by a number of working groups last year on a number of changes, including a recommendation to adopt what was known at that time as BPS Core, which is very similar to Mass Core. But I think it might be helpful for this group and, and following on Dr. Coleman's suggestion to have that textual summary, and, you know, perhaps if you can do it this evening, do a little bit of compare and contrast between what was previously proposed through those working groups and what we have before us now. So, excuse me for that objection.
Those presentations didn't answer my question for me then either.
Okay.
And how, you know, how are they, were the evidence that going to this core common curriculum, I, I understand the benefit to the system, I do think it'll be useful, I'm not disputing that value, probably as kids change schools, but that will be gap-closing, you know, there's, I'm not, I don't know how curriculum i- is, is core to that. And so that, that's, I guess that's, that's, that's the evidence that I would like to see.
Thank you for that clarification.
I don't know if Andrea wants to speak, but I have just a quick thing to say too. One is it raises the level of expectation for all students to hit a high bar. And I think that is one thing that really is gap-closing to create opportunity across schools. I had a number of students say, you know, well, we don't have art, or we don't have PE, or we don't have opportunities for career and technical education at our school, or we don't have opportunities for advanced placement. I think we have 12 schools that don't have advanced placement courses that are high schools. You know, I think that this creates opportunity for our students to have a high expectation, to have similar courses within the flexibility to say, at Boston Green, you might have environmental sciences instead of regular science, to have the flavor of the, of the school. And it also allows for a straight-up pathway between seventh through 12th grade, so that you're starting earlier on those expectations and you have a greater continuity of learning between the courses and what's expected. And I think that is also really good when you have that alignment. And you already mentioned kids going school to school and how that would help them with it. And then I just want to bring up, you know, we have an issue with chronic attendance in our, in our schools, in our high schools. And we are really trying to pay attention to that. And I think one of the things is students feeling connected to the work that they do in school. And I think this would help bring value to that and bring meaning to that. So I think that that's another way that this will help. And I don't know if you want to add something to that as well, Andrea?
My response, because I can, and I think the way you described that is really encouraging. I can definitely see this improving our performance academically and on, and on many metrics. But I go back to, I'm not sure whether that would be gap-closing. And I want to draw a distinction between improved performance, maybe improved attendance, improved graduation, and closing the gap, maybe two different things in my mind.
I, I'd say that, I think that where the gap closing there, where we could be, and, you know, getting some researchers on board to actually demonstrate this, I think that with implementation of this policy over time, we'll see, if we were to have another valedictorians report, six years after the first year of implementation, right? And, or another Baufans report, we would see that the results for Black and Brown students and our historically most marginalized students, they'll have more access to rigorous coursework as a result of having even the playing field and set a rigorous bar across the board, right? So it's an equity move because it just says, to graduate from the Boston Public Schools, you must have had access to, to this, right? Currently, that's not the case. And the, what the "this" is, is what the state has designated as being prepared for a four-year institution, right? And being prepared for workforce. So if we're not preparing, if we've set a bar at some of our schools below that, right? And, and created an opportunity for many of our students to exit the system with a diploma that doesn't match what our higher ed institutions and what a Board of Governors and DESI has said, prepare students for a, a life of opportunity, then we've exited them, like Christine was saying earlier, not fully ready. That's where I think the gap closing happens.
Yeah, that's where I just see, I, I still think that's where the performance will improve and our valedictorians will be more successful. We will have more kids maybe who get in, who get out of our, our, our schools and get into a post-secondary experience, be more successful. I completely agree that, and I think that's a desirable, wonderful outcome, right? And, and we want that, and I do think this is a good strategy for it. I think that's different than gap closing. That's different than the 30% of our kids who come into our high schools with early warning signals that predict failure. I think those are two different, and so that's the strategy I want to hear more of.
Oh, I, I completely agree with you, and I think that it has to do with the professional learning piece around what does rigor look like, what do scaffolds and supports look like in our classrooms? How do we ensure that regardless of level of English learning, regardless of disability, that we're presenting our students with rigorous, engaging, culturally relevant tasks every day, right? That they can work on in a project-based environment, et cetera. That's the work that happens as, not only as a result of this, but all of the other redesign work that's happening to ensure that every day, students are having access to really high-quality instruction.
Yeah, I mean, the literacy adoption that we just are about to do is part of the gap-closing work. The chronic attendance work that we're doing, the family liaisons that we are hiring, the social workers we're hiring, the nurses we put in our buildings, all of that, this is simply one piece, Dr. Coleman, to an overall picture within the strategic plan of how we're going to support our students and do gap closing. But this is what sets the expectation of what we are hoping to achieve and what we are saying is needed for a student to move on.
Thank you, I mean, I, I was worried as I was thinking about this, that in terms of the materials I had, I may not be getting all, all the, the complete picture, but so I'm, I'm very glad. And, and I do agree that those other strategies are extremely valuable and necessary, maybe core.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. We'll move on now to Ms. Robinson.
Thank you. I think I've unmuted. My questions really are about going back. I mean, I get excited about the potential of Mass Core, but it's got to start much earlier than eighth or ninth grade to get there. So my question is, so what's happening with things like Excellence for All, which we've invested, invested in for a part of our younger people, who will certainly be part of the earliest classes that will be getting in alignment to go through Mass Core? So are we looking very much at what's happening from grades three to six in terms of student preparation for a more rigorous curriculum? For, you know, for having more opportunity to become aligned, to do better in a program like Mass Core?
I so appreciate that question. So my team is consistently focused on the key conditions that need to be in place in order for students to succeed. What needs to be in a classroom? A caring, culturally competent teacher, high-quality instructional materials. We are really keenly focused on those things. How do we make sure our teachers have what they need to be able to make the magic happen in their classroom every day? And what are the materials that are in front of them, and how do we support them with the training that they need? And the, the mindset and beliefs that teachers have are critically important for making that happen. So deeply appreciate that. And in our Transformation School effort, we're focusing really, really clearly and heavily on ensuring that there's across-the-board training and CLSP for all of our new instructional facilitators that'll be working every day with teachers on how to implement the new literacy curriculum that's going to be rolled out in our primary grades in our elementary schools first. So to your point about those primary years being the foundation for being prepared for the secondary grades, couldn't agree with you more. So while we're implementing the policy at the secondary level, on the, in the younger grades, we've adopted a new literacy curriculum and are really turning the wheel of change every day through CPTs, through training. And Christine and her team have been leading the, the, the adoption process, including hundreds of educators, and Dr. Coleman participated in a lot of that work with us over the last several months, getting us to this other critical and critically important component, which is high-quality instructional materials. You have to have materials that are aligned to the standards and that are culturally relevant and linguistically supportive. And that's really the base, that's really the base of it. In terms of EFA, we have 16 schools currently, and those schools will continue to get supported by their coaches, and happy to, to share that the EFA effort will continue inside of the Office of Academics.
Will the EFA, will EFA programs begin to grow? I mean, I know we've been waiting to hear back the evaluation of what has happened over the three years of, of implementing EFA to date, with the idea that it would hopefully grow to more campuses. Because it feels like there would be an urgency if we're thinking about, you know, having much more rigorous curriculum, starting in grade seven or eight. If we haven't prepared our students, all of our students, we're again creating more gaps and, you know, disparities by virtually not providing equal opportunity that we know help close gaps to all students all of the time.
Well, Ms. Robinson, I think that's very helpful and astute observation here, particularly because we're thinking about, we're constantly thinking about how we move our students through the system. And given that we're talking primarily, or we've asked the presenters to premier, prepare themselves primarily to speak about high school redesign and Mass Core specifically this evening, I might ask the superintendent to talk to me over the next week or two about how we might be able to schedule some further conversation about the elementary curriculum that is preparatory for the high school curriculum that's being presented tonight. Would that work?
That would work, and I think my, my only, one other question is, you know, what's had gone on through COVID has completely shown us how important and critical all of the adults and students' lives are. So particularly family engagement. And, you know, as we see that we, our high school students are not showing up to class, we're losing them, it's also, it's also because we're not connecting with families. So that the issue of where families fit into all of this work around Mass Core, and again, getting them to, to buy into both the process and the rigor and the work in supporting their students is also going to be a critical part. So I'd like to see more about what does that family and community engagement look like as part of the preparation and implementation of, of Mass Core?
Very good, thank you for that. We'll go on now to our student representative, Ms. Reyes.
Thank you. So I am a little curi, I'm not a little, but I am curious about how This change to Mass Core could line up with our facilities and sort of access that students have to. I know part of Mass Core is like it says lab-based sciences and so how? How are we going to make sure that our high schools have spaces for students to actually be participating in a lab-based science class? Or you know, have access to a space where you can do more physical activity? Because I know that not all of our schools necessarily do more than one or two semesters of. You know, physical whatever, whether it be gym or something else.
Yeah, part of having the Mass Core Evelyn is making sure that our facilities are ready for for that and so we have. A five-year implementation of the Mass Core and I know that with gymnasiums, you're not just going to build a hundred gymnasiums, that's for sure, but. You know, we do have the opportunity now that we're all remote to do more online to give credit for other outside activities. For PE and health and nutrition expectations. Again, Ms. Ias and the team has built this so that it's not dependent on seat time, it's about competencies and mastery. And so that's also going to be an opportunity for for our students. And then even you've heard me talk about, you know, the school without walls, now that you all have passes to go to schools. Can we have lab spaces available throughout the city to be able to do these kinds of? Experiments and have these kinds of opportunities at schools that maybe aren't your home-based school. But you would meet up with your class to be able to have those types of other opportunities to do lab-based activities. So those are those details are all to be worked out over the next year and we are hoping to restart Build PPS pretty soon. And and take all of these things under consideration.
Okay, thank you, and then I'm also curious about how this might affect sort of more specialty classes, I suppose I can call it. So. Sorry, trying to think about how to phrase this. How much space is there for students to, so for example, it'll be, I was able to take. Like a many, many, many science classes over the course of my four years there, so are there? Is there enough space for students to sort of build the schedule that they want to build and include? Classes that don't necessarily fall into like the math pathway that we see like, you know, you come and you take Algebra One, then Two. Pre-Calc and then Calc or something like that, like how much space is there? How much wiggle room is there for students to take other things that don't necessarily fall into? I don't know, the expectations, I guess.
Thanks Evelyn, I think that'd be a perfect question for Dana to respond to and just from a headmaster's perspective. Like what that it what it would look like to start to talk to students about implementation?
Terrific question and what I like about your question is it really, it broadens the horizons, it doesn't limit. So there has to be room in all of this for waivers and for taking classes that you might not normally take. You know, I was thinking as we were getting ready to prepare for this, the BSAC experience that we had yesterday where. Students are getting a credit on their transcript for the presentations they made. And for the policies that they're coming up with and for all the research they did. That's a perfect example of something that doesn't neatly fit into Mass Core. But should absolutely be on a student's transcript and should count as credit. We're going to find many students over the next number of years in in the BPS who know how to design an app and can code. And they've done this on their own at home, we have to figure out how to grant them credit for that. Students who start businesses through Build, we have to figure out how to grant them credits for that. So through this waiver process, through the superintendent circular process, I think there'll be more exciting opportunities for students. To count classes and not limit students taking class.
I actually envision Evelyn a greater opportunity for very creative courses for students to take that are aligned to the state standards. That are just offered at a college or by a business or offered at Mass and Park or Votek or. You know, and then students being able to access those those courses potentially. And and having a bigger course catalog and a bigger opportunity to take courses that interest you. Rather than just the other courses and as Ms. Ias had said earlier, there is a rigorous course waiver process. For that so that we can do the equating that needs to happen between what would have been a traditional biology course. And maybe now is at the aquarium and it's a marine biology course. And you can take your take the MBTA to this this course and and get this get credit for it.
Thank you for that, I'm also wondering. How will this affect scheduling at schools, I know that scheduling is a. Huge endeavor that guidance counselors usually take on. And I think I'm sure that some schools and please correct me if I'm wrong, but some schools will have to. Increase their requirements in some areas and I'm just wondering how students will. Or how schools will make sure that students have space and time in their schedules to figure out how to get them all of those requirements.
Yeah, I could speak to that for a little bit, we started, so um, this is part, as you know, Evelyn, we talked about this at BSAC. Part of like figuring out how we're going to make it equitable and how it's going to be fair, so. First of all, we're going to make sure it's like the school's responsibility that all students complete these throughout their high school career, complete these requirements. There's no student will have that worship, will have the responsibility of choosing when they want to not take the requirement or not. And then as regards to like freedom of time, space during school, I was thinking the same thing, which is why like. We come to came to the consensus that there should definitely be student participation in planning the schedule and. Not only like participation, but like they must like the administrator must listen to students because. It's really important that students still are able to meet these requirements, will still have studies, freedom to take other classes and other like. Ways of not just taking requirements at school because obviously no one really, no one wants to just take English, Math, Science and History every day like. That school is for like especially high school, you have more freedom in choosing classes and having study periods, so I think that should definitely be emphasized in terms of like. Building these curriculum school to school, so yeah.
In the future too Evelyn, and I know I've talked to BSAC about this in terms of the vision and I'm sure that. Ms. Dr. Bergman and McIntyre are going to talk a little bit about high school redesign and maybe what it would look like, I see schools really being open for longer periods of time. Now we have remote learning with us, so we have the opportunity to take a lot of courses online or blended models, so I think that's. That's an opportunity as well and you could take classes in the evening or classes on the weekends. Seminars, you know, if you take an art class, you might be able to take a mural painting class, for instance, with the city curator. You know, just all these different opportunities that maybe we could build over the five years. That would be very creative opportunities for students based on interest, but still meet the needs of the Mass Core.
Okay, um, thank you, I think those are all my questions for now.
All right, thank you, Ms. Reyes, we're going to go next to Dr. Rivera and then to Mr. O'Neill and then to the vice chair.
So I had more of more like process kinds of questions to clarify what we're actually. Also voting on for June tenth because. I am concerned if we're actually voting to make Mass Core a graduation requirement. Because whenever we're, you know, increasing and making new requirements, right? There's going to be an increase in dropout rates, just as when we adopted MCAS. We saw significant dropout rates particularly for students of color. So I just want to clarify what it is that we're actually voting on first, is that first question and then. You know, concerns as well about. If if this has been the first presentation on Mass Core or I'm just because I've been on the committee about a year, a year now. Because there's so many questions that I have related to a lot of what Dr. Coleman brought up. Regarding alignment with some of the plans for the school design and so it's also like. Should we first do the school redesign plan and then Mass Core? Because there seems to be a need for alignment there, so first question is again more. Are we voting on 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 this as a graduation requirement for June tenth?
That is the request and that's the proposal, I'm curious if you all have seen the actual policy? Did you receive the actual policy? Maybe not, okay, so. The the actual language of the policy should have gone to you in advance of this meeting, so I'll apologize for that. Not sure where that got lost in the shuffle, but along with the draft, with the deck, with the PowerPoint for tonight, you should have received the. The actual language of the proposed policy, which is about, I think it's about five pages long. But we can, so so the proposal is to to vote on that document becoming the. The the Boston Public Schools graduation policy, right? So it would, it outlines the Mass Core requirements as the requirements for graduation. With all of the flexibilities that we started to talk about, which are the things, the the pieces of language. Dr. Rivera, that speak to how we stem. Losing students along the way. It's setting a requirement while at the same time creating ramps to make sure that every single one of our students, regardless of where they come in. Can meet that requirement because we can waive courses, they can receive credit for work done previously. And for the acceleration, they can test out of content that they've already mastered. And they can and they don't have to be seated in a particular place for X number of minutes in order to meet the requirement. So we can accelerate them, test them out and keep them moving, which is something that we hadn't previously included, which was. To the chair's earlier point about bringing some of the context from the previous presentations of years past. Into the picture, something that we hadn't been able to reconcile before, right? So the fact that we can credit students in this way, in a very flexible way. And do it in a in a in a from a competency, our mastery-based perspective. Is going to give us that ability to un-ramp students and accelerate them to graduation. Rather than as you're saying, if without that, we could just be setting a high bar and saying, go ahead and jump.
Yeah, and so. I saw that in one of your slides that you had. A way that you were going to be like a kind of mapping or seeing which schools are ready, right, to what are they already, you know, offering? It seems to me like that's right there, like that should happen first before we accept this as. Like a graduation requirement is a very serious, you know.
Yeah.
Rec, you know, pot lawyer that we're adopting and if some schools aren't going to be ready. To do this, then others like just, I feel like we need to have more of that. Understanding of what schools would, you know, have that those ramps. And it's I think that's a little related to what Ms. Robinson brought up too about. You know, which schools are already going to have some some curriculum in place. So yeah, my main concern is that anytime and you know, and this is, you know, in my own research, anytime you. Adopt stricter graduation requirements, you know, there's going to be some big. You know, gaps there in outcomes. So yeah, I and and again, I think going to Evelyn's raises questions about. The space, you know, the classes, that's where Bill BPS, the high school redesign. It's those, I I should we have those things in place first before we make this a graduation requirement? Those are my concerns and I I don't know if there'll be answers tonight, but I I, yeah, my concerns are around those issues.
Dr. Rivera, I'm going to put a hold on the question of sequencing for the time being, but I think you as well as some of our other. Colleagues, starting with Dr. Coleman on down, have noted that we need a little bit additional material to. Consider prior to taking a vote on this matter and so I'll be talking with the superintendent about this, but I think, you know. June ten is probably too ambitious of a date for us to take a vote on the the policy that's been presented tonight. And I think the material that's been requested should be in many respects already in existence. And it might just take a little bit of time to collate that and then provide it to us for further review. So I'd suggest that we push this. Vote to a later time. This summer after the committee's had a chance to digest some of the material that's been requested this evening. And then we can reconvene at an appropriate time.
If if I may, Chair, I just want to briefly respond to some of Dr. Rivera's concerns. So to to the chair's point, much of that analysis has done, has been done in the past and. It was it was found that an overwhelming majority of schools are actually very, very close to. To providing, to having in place all of what they need in order to provide the graduation requirement. So to Christine's earlier point, some of it is very technical, technical changes and technical fixes. Cleaning up our course catalog to make sure that the courses that are aligned already and are already being taught and completed. Are designated as Mass Core-aligned, that's, you know, kind of one swath of work. And just wanted to to note that in. In previous years, a a a lot of work has been done to bring to to bring the analysis to the table, but we'll make sure to share all those. All that previous analysis with you as well as the policy that was put together with all of that in mind. And then the particular concerns that you have that that we share, right? We share those concerns and want to make sure that every single flexibility and un-ramp is there, every scaffold is there so that every student can reach the graduation requirement. The last thing that I wanted to add there was just Chair, I think you asked earlier what for sort of like a comparison between BPS Core and and Mass Core. BPS Core really was just this idea that we would have the the English Language Arts. So the four credits of the four units of ELA or or English, the four of Math, the three of Science. And the social studies requirements be the BPS graduation requirements. And leaving out the five core electives, PE, Arts, World Language. So it really was just the the core academics as the as the graduation requirement, that's what was proposed last June. As a result of the high school working.
If you would please just, if you could find that report and circulate it for the committee, again, you can share with Ms. Sullivan and and we'll all take a look at it. What I'm particularly interested in is that group at the time made a conscious decision to not recommend Mass Core and so I want to understand. Where are thinking to evolve this time? Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and this has been a real thoughtful conversation because this is such important work on the future of our district. So first of all, Ms. Ias and Ms. Landry, thank you for the presentation we received tonight, I I find it thoughtful and a great. Movement in a in a direction to have the input of Headmaster Brown and and the particular comments you made at the end of you want to hear from the school committee about. What's important and what's a priority and how do we place, how do we do this? Really, I was listening very closely at what you were saying there and thank you for that and also to. Simon and and Grace Alia, is that how you pronounce your name? I believe.
Rosal or Gracie?
Gracie, okay, thank you, so to hear from both of you about the students' viewpoints and the fact that the superintendent had you sitting at the table. And meeting several times with BSAC, realizing the implication of students and the input you gave on those slides was very important. So thank you for that, Superintendent, I am I am directionally there with you and I know. This comes down to and Dr. Rivera, your question, how long have people been working on this, are you getting on a moving train, so to speak, I think what you were saying? Interim Superintendent Perel kind of started the working groups and looking at this as a result of some of the. Studies that were done independently that woke a lot of us. as a result of some of the studies that were done independently that woke a lot of us up. And so I think it comes down to a fundamental belief or decision we have to make as a committee, which is, are we focused on having our youth graduate from Boston Public Schools? Or are we focused on having them ready for college, career, and life? And do we own them, so to speak? Or are we, are we responsible for them for 12 years? Or we're responsible for them for 16 years and beyond? And it was eye-opening to see the studies that showed our students were not succeeding when they were going on to college, community and, and, you know, full four-time, full, full four-year educational institutions. And quite frankly, we hear from employers that our students are suffering when they're going into the job market as well. And so we are not setting them up to succeed in the economy that is growing in Boston and how they can have the best opportunity going forward. So so much work has been done the past few years to lower the dropout rate and raise the graduation rate in Boston. And concurrently, the Success Boston program has been going on to help our students succeed. But I think the superintendent has really put her finger on the pulse here of what a key issue is about raising expectations and whether it's five, six years out, but putting the stick in the ground now, or the stake in the ground now to say, five years out, we're going to expect you to adapt, you headmasters, to adapt your program so that this is what is needed for our children to succeed in college and career. And the studies that we saw show that the gap between those who graduated meeting MasCor were doing better than those who didn't. So I think psychologically, superintendent, I'm 100% there. And it took me a while to get there, as you know, because I was part of the camp that was saying, well, Boston is different and we have autonomy and, you know, so on and so forth. We always have excuses of why we can't do it. Dr. Rivera, I agree with you 100%. There are going to be some serious repercussions to us doing this. First of all, there is going to be a lower graduation rate and potentially a higher dropout rate at first. And we need to really think that through. Superintendent, I'm going to be interested to hear your thoughts on this because you know how passionate I am about the dropout rate. I don't want to see that happen, but I'm nervous about that happening. But are we making the right decision for our children in the long term? And if that's the case, what are all the other supports around it? And I think the superintendent and her team kind of laid out, here are the things, if you say to us, we want MasCor down the line, here are the things we're going to work on to make sure it's successfully implemented. I do share the same concern that you had. It seemed to be a little bit of the cock before the horse of approve the policy and then we'll do the gap analysis. And I think that's what was laid out on the slide, though I agree with, I think, Ms. Sayes just said, some of these working groups have done the work, the gap analysis. And I think they could probably pretty quickly give us that information so we know the scope of the problem in front of us. But this is, this is a huge move for this body to make if we put that stake in the ground and say, our expectations are high for all of our students and we want them to read, meet these requirements. But we also know it's incumbent upon us to devote the resources and the structure and allow the superintendent to make the structural change that all of our students can then reach it. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a carrot and a stick approach, I think. So this is, this is a big move. And I, as I started, I said at the outset, philosophically there in us getting there, but I'm concerned about what the steps are going to be to make it turn out positive as opposed to some potential unintended consequences offered. And I think superintendent, you're chopping at the bit to respond to that.
I am, because this is really important to the overall foundation and structure of what we are trying to accomplish with our high school redesign and setting high expectations for our students and bringing rigor into the schools. I think it's absolutely critical to that work. And we phase it in over five years. We build the courses each year. So we have done this in a way that allows us to give us the time to think thoughtfully about it and to build the systems to support our students so that there is not a dropout. Remember, this is this year's current seventh graders that we are talking about. So we have time to build all of those systems in place in order for children to meet these expectations that we are setting for them. But I don't want to lower the bar for them. I think all of our children can achieve these high standards. And I would urge the committee, I'm happy to bring it back and share more about the process. But this is a huge piece of the foundation. And, and I just really think that we can't continue to punt this and keep studying each year. I am committed to making sure that we don't see dropout rates. We don't see lower graduation rates because we have to wrap around these services. That is why you see in this budget, the addition of the social workers, the family liaisons. And then in next year's budget, the recommendations around the high school redesign and counselor support and athletics and arts and arts programming and sciences. I mean, it is just a fundamental building block to everything that we are going to be doing in the future. And I think it's absolutely essential. And so I'm, I'm not certain why that policy is not sitting right in front of you. You know, I've talked to my team and they feel, they thought it was sent. And so I want to just make sure that we are getting you what you need. And if it has to come at a later date, because we are phasing this in over five years, I'm happy to bring it back, answer any questions that you have about it and make sure that you're comfortable with what we are going to be passing so that it's good for all of our kids.
Thank you. And as I said, I agree with you, this is an important building block and I'm philosophically there. I, along with some comments that you've heard before, I echo some of the comments you've heard before. Like I think it'd be interesting for us to see the gap analysis to understand a little bit better about what some of those gaps are that you have to fill. Tonight's report clearly showed a bunch of them from high level. But to understand how many of our students' impacts, things like that, would be helpful. But I agree with you, this is a fundamental building block and it is a critical decision for this body to make. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil, Vice Chair Oliver Davila.
Thank you, Chair. So thank you, first of all, to Principal Brown and Gracie and also Simon for your presentation and Ms. Landry and Ms. Sayes. Ms. Landry, I would totally hire you for anything. You are so focused. I was so impressed, I have to tell you. I, I get it, don't even, you didn't even have to apologize to us. We totally understand.
Thank you.
Um, so I wanted to say, like in everybody's comments, one of my questions was around, is this really going to be the city as a classroom? And if it, if it's, if it is in the sense of the things that I've heard, then that's very exciting. So if students can actually go high school to high school or go around the city, then that to me is like a very exciting thing for when we're talking about high school redesign as well and really keeping young people engaged and attracting people and families to our district. I definitely, I am not, I'm not a guest, I guess I'm in the middle here. I, I fear that we're going to have high dropout rates. That's my biggest fear of undertaking this. And so I've heard a lot about the on-ramps and the scaffolding and the credits. I think there's some issues around money. And I know you just mentioned putting other supports, but I feel like if we're moving in this direction, schools will need to have more dollars. And it's reminiscent, I hate to say this, but it's reminiscent to me of the start times situation that we had. So I feel like this is a big thing to vote on. And, and I know we don't have the policy in front of us. And if we did, I don't know if it would even have all the information that I need. I would like to see just much more specifics around this because it is a big vote. And you're saying, oh, there's going to be an on-ramp, oh, there's going to be scaffolding. I think I would just need to see much more clearly what exactly that means for schools. What does the on-ramp look like? What does the scaffolding look like? What's the dollar guarantee for schools so that they can have the arts? You know, what's the guarantee for giving credit to students? And just again, being much, much more specific. I want to understand two things. One is kind of what are the flexibilities? And what are the high supports? So what are the flexibilities? For example, if a student has, you know, lots of mental health issues, like, and they, you know, it's, it's a big stretch for them. Like what are the flexibilities for students? And how are we kind of understanding that? Because I worry about ELL students, I worry about sped students and what that kind of looks like. And then my other question is around alternative education and how, where does alternative education fit in in this? So those are two, two things.
I could start by speaking a little bit to the flexibilities. That's a great question. Maybe Andrea, if you could talk to the Alt Ed piece.
I actually share my screen to, that shares the policy language where those flexibilities are built into the policy really concretely while you talk them through, Christine.
Oh, great, thank you. So I think two, two pieces that I go to immediately are first, the flexibilities around seat time, which especially during this COVID time is incredibly important to us. And it's something that MasCor would allow for across the district. Of course, schools can opt to be creative with seat time. But again, for the whole district to be able to address this together and come up with solutions together, I think is a very powerful thing. And what it would mean is that we have to think through how we would assess for competency, right? But that the same amount of seat time, especially for a student who might have emotional concerns, who might be in and out of school, that could be incredibly important. And I think the other thing that I wanted to bring up, and which came up a lot in our PLC too, where we were specifically focused on our English learners and on students with disabilities. One sort of unintentional barrier that we sometimes create for our students, for our English learners, newcomers especially, is that we still require that they take two years of a foreign language as they're taking incredible amounts of ESL time and English courses, right? And this would allow us to think differently about what it means to learn a world language. To, as a district, say that when students are coming to our country, they're in, are learning English as a world language, then that should count for their two credits, of course, of foreign language, which in most cases right now doesn't. And so I think that just speaks to the, sometimes the barriers that we create for our most marginalized students that don't need to be there and that we could address as a, as a district. Andrea, I don't know if you wanted to say more about flexibilities or about Alt Ed?
In terms of, thank you, in terms of Alt Ed and Vice Chair Oliver Davila, you also talked about students with disabilities. One of the flexibilities built in here and one of the pieces of, again, not policy but process that needs to be developed is pathways for graduation for students that are eligible for the MCAS alt. So they will still be reaching this bar, but through an alternative pathway. For our alternative education students, we believe that being able to demonstrate mastery of content through not having had to sit seat time, but demonstrating that you've mastered the content through testing out or through some alternative means allows for students to be able to accelerate in a way that they're not able to right now. So one of the things we talked about, a bunch in the PLC and in other subsequent conversations with headmasters, they talked about, you know, Algebra II is a requirement for MasCor, for example, right? You might have a student that is in, in, in an even more advanced mathematics course, right? And be taking maybe Calc by the time they're, they're finishing through an accelerated pathway or through an integrated math pathway. But because they hadn't, at their school, met the specific requirement, hadn't taken, and it's not on their transcript that they've taken Algebra II, they will have to go back and take that course during summer, not be able to graduate now in June, but take that course during summer and graduate in August and take it online over the summer, for example. This would allow for the student to, at the end of June right now, sit for an exam that would allow them to then gain the credit for Algebra II because they've already mastered the content and not have to actually elongate their course of study, but accelerate it even further. So it closes the gap for Alt Ed students because it helps to really clarify the process that they can get from the day one, coming through the door, to graduation. And that it's standardized across the district and accelerated with all of those on-ramps and those waivers and the testing out of seat time for competence and mastery.
Do you, have you looked at the assessment that you did that looks at where each school is at in terms of this, you know, how much more they need to ramp up to take off on MasCor? Did you also look at the financial piece? So what is it going to take to get that school to the next level? And is, is that, or do you foresee that there's not, there's not a huge cost because there's more sharing?
I think the sharing will, will play an important role. I think the fact that we're going to be in a remote environment for some period and that we've learned so much in this remote period around how we can create masterclasses, how we can create enrollment across schools that'll create more access. So with students, we were talking about how, well, if my, if my school doesn't offer advanced sculpture, but I want to take that, can I take that in some way by being duly enrolled in my school and at BAA potentially, or at MasArts, right? That would actually just create a whole lot more access without adding more staff potentially and without, yeah, without it, with it being potentially really close to budget neutral. So without having fleshed out all of the possibilities that exist inside of that, we're making the hypothesis that it's doable within a reasonable range for most schools, including for PE, we're not, we're certainly not anticipating that every school that doesn't have a gym right now would build a gym, right? Which has been named as one of the challenges in the past, right? The PE requirement can be met in so many flexible ways, including participation in inter-scholastic sports, participating in any kind of activity, and this is permissible by DESI, any kind of activity, right? Whether it's an organized activity, martial arts, a yoga class, you know, skating, participating in like high-intensity interval training, anything that, that, anything of that nature meets the requirement. So I think this is what the superintendent was describing earlier, that we don't necessarily need to adjust facilities to make this work, right? We can provide processes for schools to think through, what are the options that are available to your school? And this is where the gap analysis comes into play. It's not necessarily an analysis of just of what's on your schedule, what's in your course catalog right now. It's what are the assets that are available to you in your neighborhood? What are the partnerships that are possible that we can activate to make more access of it, more, to create more opportunity for your students? Is there, you know, is the, are you maximizing the use of the Boys and Girls Club partnership up the block? Is there an out-of-school time partner that you can work with to provide some of the additional supports in order to make the course come to life?
Yeah, thank you for saying that. That's definitely one of my points, you know, that I'm always going to bring up is that we have so many partners offering things, like we don't have to recreate everything. And we can definitely partner. And the reason I ask the financial question is I just don't, I don't want to vote on something that ultimately at some point, if, if our budget is tight and people will have to make difficult choices again, then we're just back to square one. So that's always something that I'm just thinking about. And then just, I have a tiny pet peeve that I just want to share in your presentation. And when we have information from the census, I understand that we have to put Hispanic. But if it is our own data, then we don't have to put anything that describes somebody with the word panic. I just don't think should be part of our language. So if we can put, you know, Latino, Latina, whatever it is you want to put down. And then also, one of the slides talked only about race, when it's really race and ethnicity. So we can just keep that in mind in our presentations. I would really appreciate it.
Thank you for brought that up before.
Thank you for brought that up before. And so we'll catch it next time. So sorry about that.
Okay. Uh, well, thank you, Superintendent, and thank you once again to this team, uh, for the presentation tonight. I know we have a lot more work to do and we've outlined that through our conversation here this evening, but I think it's, um, all for, uh, the greater good because we've been able to flush out some initial issues and concerns here. So I've asked my question and I want to thank, uh, our Executive Secretary, Secretary Liz Sullivan for circulating to the group, the policy, um, proposals that were referenced from earlier, uh, for our review. Going, looking forward, I'm going to, um, as I mentioned earlier, uh, suggest that we hold on a vote on this policy pending the provision of some further information. And I will, uh, work with the Vice Chair as well as Superintendent Casilius, on an appropriate time to bring back this presentation. And, um, excuse me. Excuse me. And, and in the meantime, we can, um, continue to review any further material that the, the district wants to provide. Nevertheless, I do want to thank, I know we've, uh, as we've heard from others, appreciate the students that have given their time here and certainly the leaders from, uh, our schools, not limited to Mr. Brown, uh, but also his colleagues in the professional learning community, as well as, uh, our, uh, our central office staff who's been working on it. So I think, um, we will say thank you for now and we will look forward to seeing you back here again at some point soon. Uh, and we will move on to our next report.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So our final report this evening is a presentation on the district's work to develop a framework for high school redesign. And as you've heard, um, in this previous presentation on Mass Corps, there's a lot of commonality between, uh, the work that the district is doing around Mass Corps and what the district's doing on, um, high school redesign. Uh, so we have to, with us tonight are high school superintendents, Dr. Yelia Brueggemann, as well as Dr. Lynda McIntyre, uh, to present their report. I'm going to ask Superintendent to perhaps give us some first framing, uh, comments to, talk about how we're, um, how we should take this report. I, I believe this is, um, in your words, uh, in some previous conversations, a bit of a first glance at, uh, the district's thinking in, um, moving on, uh, the high school redesign project.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. We have been working all year on high school redesign. And I know Dr. McIntyre and Dr. Brueggemann will talk to you about some of the work the headmasters have done. Then the next phase is planning, um, all of next year for hopefully what will be a 2122 start. It is aligned to Bill PPS and trying to do the pathway work that we had talked about, seven through 12 with, um, seven of our, uh, comprehensive high schools. This is also foundational with the Mass Corps work. So we will be bringing this to you today as a framework for the work that we are hoping to get started on as we move forward with high school redesign, um, efforts in, in bringing rigor to the schools, bringing athletics and bringing those wraparound services, so that students have a more comprehensive experience in the high schools. There's still a lot more yet work to be done on this. So we're interested in your questions and your ideas as we continue to, um, work through the high school redesign over the next year as we implement. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Brueggemann and Dr. McIntyre and for their presentation.
So good evening Chairman LaCanto, Co-Chair, Ms. Oliver Davila, and Superintendent Dr. Casilius and other school committee members. On behalf of Dr. Brueggemann and myself, we're excited to share with you this high level, uh, design of what our high school redesign could potentially become. If you would, I would like to share my screen.
While Dr. McIntyre is sharing her screen, um, just to let you know that this presentation is very high level. Uh, we have not engaged with all stakeholders yet due to COVID. We passed some of the engagement and now we are going to do some virtually. We also have put a, a working group together of 12 headmasters. And, uh, so we had the redesign going to, in two phases, uh, three phases actually, but with a long-term goal and a short-term goal. Today we are going to share with you the short-term goal.
All right. Why can't I move this? Trust me, I practiced this before. Now it's stuck for some reason.
Try the arrow.
I am doing the arrow, but it won't move. Okay, wait. So I'll do it that way. So I'll start with the agenda. Um, and so this is the high school redesign for our comprehensive schools. Uh, you'll have a chance to look at some data. Uh, we'll take a look at the role of alternative education within the design, as well as the purpose for the design. Throughout this presentation, we'll make reference to our framework, which will include the Core Four, which are national models of rigor and recognized, um, all around the world. Uh, we'll talk about the alignment to our strategic plan, um, the commitments and the priorities. We'll identify pathways that will be included in a number of our redesigned schools, as well as a timeline for this process.
So after analyzing district and, and state data, we took a look at the location of the high schools. And there are seven high schools that we prioritize to expand from nine to 12 to seven to 12. Implementation will take place in the school year 2122. Those high schools are the Burke, Brighton, Keish, Charlestown, East Boston, English and Madison Park. Now, the selection of those high schools was also based on location. And we did tour the buildings to make sure that we could accommodate the middle school students, which is part of the Bill BPS for the strategic plan. We have some schools in this group that are transformation schools. So, uh, the, the investment for the redesign will include all the schools in transformation, as well as East Boston and the Burke, which are not in transformation. This is all aligned also to the Student Opportunity Act and to the DESI MOU.
So some key data insights that are guiding the work we're trying to accomplish include this understanding that I know most of you already have of our economically disadvantaged students, our students with disabilities, our English language learners are concentrated in most of our large open enrollment schools. And as a result, um, there's more resources needed to address their academic and non-academic needs. And you can see through this data that these seven comprehensive high schools perform at a lower, uh, I would say at a lower level than all other BPS high schools. And you can look at everything from their MCAS achievement to the graduation rate, the dropout rate and the chronic absenteeism rate are all challenged in our seven comprehensive high schools as opposed to our other BPS high school. So this work is designed to engage those characteristics and to bring about greater levels of equity amongst all of our schools.
So many students choose to attend alternative education while others are referred to these schools or programs. Whatever schools, Boston Public School students attend, we are responsible and accountable to provide every student with an education. Alternative education is part of the high school redesign and we want students to experience a cohesive educational system. In order to do that, last winter, we conducted an evaluation of alternative education and programs. While we're not ready to bring you the full report, we wanted to, to talk to you or, or let you know the vision that we have to make sure that our students are succeeding in a school. We did see a program at Excel that, that is very successful, that is within Excel. So on the model, we took a look at the seven comprehensive high schools. As an example, Brighton, we plan to move this coming school year, the ETO youth program. But the way we want to redesign those programs is for students at Brighton High School to have the access if they are one or two credits behind. We can't wait until they are a whole year to, to catch them up in their academics. So we want the students to go into the program and then come out to also access the rest of the curriculum and everything that the schools have to offer. Schools like the Burke, we're not looking at putting in there, uh, a program inside the school, but they do have ABC University nearby. So we want the same, the center of a program to have the access to the students of the Burke. The Charlestown has the Diploma Plus program. English High School is near Greater Eggleston. East Boston has the Fairfax Program, which we, we spoke to Phil this morning and he was telling us that actually this program is what held with graduation rate because he can immediately refer the students to get the support at the program. We spoke about Excel, Madison Park, we are looking at having, um, Boston Adult Central High School help with that program at Madison Park. The Boston Collaborative High School already has lock on St. Mary, Otro Camino. And we're looking at placing in there the Middle School Academy, which is the Court of Kandahar. Beta, Bata, BDA, Community Academy, Ostagai. We're looking at leaving those programs so that students still have the access to the programs. Again, uh, students will be able to, to do, to choose where they are going, but we do feel that this will provide more access and opportunity to close the gap.
Right. And so the other thing that we think is that pairing opportunities for comprehensive schools to be in alignment with alternative schools will help expedite the process for a student who wants access to an alternative school. Typically, it can take anywhere between four to six weeks for a student to actually get a seat in an alternative program. Through developing this alignment, we are hoping that students will get in more, a more immediate access to a program that they desire. And the flip side of that, much like East Boston and the Fairfax Program, having these relationships will help us grow our performance as a district as well. So there are over 1,000 students enrolled in alternative Ed schools and programs across our district. An enrollment ranges from, let's say, 25 students at like Ostagai High to 385 students at Boston Day and Evening Academy. Attendance in chronic absenteeism also differ amongst the schools and programs. Chronic absenteeism percentage of students missing 10% of more. School days in alternative Ed programs range from 22% to 100%. The average percentage of students attending on a daily basis ranges from 46% to 92%. So we have a wide disparity in who's attending daily and who's chronically absent. And it is our responsibility to address that.
So we know that we must come out with innovative programs for our students. I think that right now COVID and remote learning is providing us the opportunity to analyze, what can we do online for the students that are ready to take online program? And perhaps, uh, diminish the chronic absenteeism that we have. What can we do with the school to work programming? So that the students have an opportunity to work and also align that to a class that they might be taking for credit. And I believe, uh, our colleagues previously with the Mass Corps spoke about this type of opportunity too that we can provide to our students.
So the rationale behind the redesign, you heard a lot this, this evening about increasing rigor through the Mass Corps adoption district-wide. It is clear that we do need to up the rigor in all of our schools. We want to make sure that our most vulnerable students have access to high-quality opportunities to learn. We want to increase access and opportunity for students district-wide. Doesn't matter what your zip code is or whatever school you choose to go to. That school should provide you with an equitable opportunity to succeed. We want to improve access to high-quality seats. So if you're in East Boston or Charlestown, Roxbury, Dorchester, we want there to be an open, comprehensive school for you to choose that will provide you a great learning experience. In addition, we want to provide career pathways that align to real-life jobs, real-life opportunities, careers, present careers and future careers. In our schools, we know how it, how important it is to meet not only the academic needs, but the non-academic needs of our students. So we're engaging the hub school model. Within that model, we're providing multi-tiered systems of support that will address the most vulnerable student or just any student that might be struggling in a course or with a life challenge at home. So the investments that are being made to the hub school communities will serve to support this entire high school redesign. Many of our schools have outdated reputations that we want to change. We want to rebrand our schools through a positive marketing experience, allowing the public to know that what we do is not private, it's a public pedagogy. And what we're offering is relevant and engaging and rigorous. And we want your child or your children to have access to this opportunity. We want to do this work through an equity lens. We want to make the decisions based on the needs of our most vulnerable, as well as those who hold the social and political capital. No one should be left out.
The framework for the high school redesign is aligned to the strategic plan and also is aligned to excel for excellence for all. We see this as a call to action for systemic thinking in order to improve education outcomes for students, including English learners and students with disabilities. The framework is, again, uh, I mentioned is aligned to the, to the strategic plan, pre-AP. So pre-AP, those are strategies. And the pre-AP strategies will provide the opportunity for our students to be at the grade level. We spoke before also about the Mass Corps. The pre-AP will also help our students with the Mass Corps, the strategies that are implemented. Pre-AP will give us participation if we apply this district-wide for all our students to be, to be, our teachers to be trained and to implement in their classroom because we have so much mobility at Boston Public School. This way, wherever the school they go, if they are moving, including alternative education, they will take those strategies for learning with them.
And can I add that the pre-AP opportunity will extend down to grades eight, grades nine and help us with that transition and that onboarding of grade seven through 12?
And I will say farther, that pre-AP should go down to grade five and six. So that we get, and we have them at the elementary level coming up into the middle school. The pre-AP will expand the access to AP courses. We look at the data and I believe Dr. Casilius mentioned before, there were only about 12 high schools and they were offering zero to four courses for AP. So we want to expand AP courses. Career and technical education is already at many of our high schools. Again, some of the comprehensive schools that we have chosen for the redesign probably have one CTE program. We want to make sure that our students do have access to that. We look and also expanding, uh, early college dual, dual enrollment opportunities for, for, uh, credit-bearing courses, which again are lacking in the comprehensive high schools that are in the redesign. So that we have, we have two schools at BPS that already have ID, it's nodding in, in the queen sea. So international baccalaureate is a curriculum that is academically challenging and balanced. It provides students opportunity to develop knowledge, attitudes, skills to participate in a global society. in a global society. The social-emotional learning is embedded in the curriculum. The cultural, linguistically, and sustained practices are also in the curriculum. IB is actually K-12. We are looking right now at the middle-year program for our middle schoolers, the DP, the Diploma Program, and also the career-related program, which will embed all the Core Four Framework.
And all of these programs are inclusive of our students with disabilities. So just a little more about the International Baccalaureate Program. It's encouraging students across the world to be active, compassionate problem solvers and lifelong learners, and that's our end game, to prepare students to have a good life space. And the other thing that I want to leave you with about the IB program is that we can backtrack it all the way to age three and bring it all the way to age 19 so that it can be a strand that we can introduce in the beginning and it can carry our students all the way through the end. Now, there'll be a number of opportunities, almost a menu, for students to choose. Not everybody will be, want the diploma-granting IB program, but it's there for them to have. Not everybody will want a career pathway. They might want dual enrollment. But whatever it is they desire, it is our desire to have it present for them, to increase their opportunities for access and to learn.
So as we look at the long-term goal for IB, we want to also partner across the world with schools that offer IB.
So how does it align to our strategic plan? It is our thinking that this is a prime opportunity to help eliminate the opportunity and achievement gap. And we are offering rigorous opportunities for students to learn, but not without supports. The multi-tiered system of support will address, once again, the needs of any learner. And all of our schools that are in this design will be engaging that system, as well as having social workers readily available to help students navigate trauma and social-emotional needs in order for them to achieve academically. We want to accelerate learning, but not going back and giving a ninth-grade student seventh-grade curriculum, but giving them standard-based opportunities to learn and a set of skills and a set of strategies to address that learning. We want to hear from all of our students, not just the best and the brightest, but every single Boston Public School student should have a voice and a say in what learning should look like, feel like, and be like for him or her within our district and within our schools. We want to expand the opportunities by providing multiple pathways. If you want to do art or you want to be a dancer, we have one school, it's Boston Arts Academy. It's a great school, but it's lottery-based. Only so many students can go there. But if you aspire to dance, to tell your story, you should have a school you can go to in addition to Boston Arts Academy. And we want to make sure that that's available across the district. We want to begin to build trust with our students who've been historically left out of the learning process and underserved. We want to raise their voices and give them opportunities that perhaps they've not had in the past because their school was maybe high property or under-resourced. And finally, we want to activate new partnerships to help us build out this understanding.
This is an example. The cross-section of the commitment and priority under achieving gaps, which is commitment number one, we have been meeting with the Office of English Learners and we talked about how we said that we want to bring AP in the heritage language of our students. AP is Spanish, for example. Students will be able to have the access to the syntax of their own language, which research shows if you master your first language, your second language will come much faster and you will do better academically. This will be an AP course where students will be excited to take that course. We also are working on a, Desi is proposing to grandfather in the licensure for teachers who are bilingual. So we're working with that and how do we offer a dual-language class for our English learners in biology because we do have teachers who are bilingual. So we want to find those opportunities for our students. The syllable literacy, this will increase the access to the syllable literacy. Andrea spoke before about oral language testing. Well, this will allow the students to actually test out of that oral language, which will be required for college. Another example, we are working with the Office of Human Capital to grow your own teachers. As we look at in the future to have dual-language elementary schools, so we want to grow your own through the Teacher Cadet Program and provide this opportunity while in high school to get a pathway in education. So we are guiding our students to become the educators that we need at schools.
So some of the pathway options across the city will really include, and we talked a little bit about this in the earlier presentation, the city as a classroom. Now is a prime time to understand that learning has to take place beyond the walls of the classroom, outside of the brick and mortar, and what an opportunity for us to engage that in this time. Yes, the city should be our classroom. We should be partnering with Boston After School and Beyond, offering master classes. We should be partnering with sailing programs, offering opportunities for children to learn to sail as a way of making their physical education credit. Performing arts, we talked a little bit about it. There should be numerous opportunities to engage the arts, particularly because children who experience trauma can sometimes work that trauma out through those artistic opportunities. STEAM, it should not be that you have to go to the O'Brien or to the Dearborn to access a great STEAM program. Every school in the 21st century should provide an opportunity for students to learn science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. We want to expand access to high-quality, industry-recognized career pathways. We want people to have access to carpentry. It should not just be at Madison, but if you're at the Dearborn and you want to learn carpentry or you're at the O'Brien, why can't you take that course of carpentry at a Madison Park? Ilya talked about the Teacher Cadet Program. We want to build connections with health careers, information technology, but what we want to mostly do is align the pathways to the labor market, to the job demands that are present and that will be present in our future so that it is relevant and can offer our children, our students, great life outcomes.
As we align, decide, and execute the high school redesign, we see this as a collective responsibility for high-quality college and career pathways, which includes six components: labor market demand, college and career planning, rigorous technical instruction, work-based learning, credential preparation, and post-secondary options. We want to see the Core Four embedded so that when the students start in seventh grade, they are doing career exploration, robotics, and we have a long list of what we want to offer our middle schoolers, and we're not going to go in it because we don't have time. However, we want to embed the International Baccalaureate, the AP, the college, the technical CTE courses, and plus the dual enrollment, the early college, all embedded into those pathways with flexibility, designed then to promote equitable access by eliminating barriers to participation and supporting agency as students take an active role in crafting their pathway.
And I'll just bring this through line to you. Through this collective responsibility, we are once again putting all hands on deck. We are sharing a mutual accountability for the work. We're building capacity through job-embedded supports. We're making education public, not just the job of the teacher or the parent, but a public partnership. We're building greater access and at the same time removing the barriers that have caused our students to be disproportionately represented in many of the greater things in life.
Our timeline, we're working on it. Right now, we're looking at the pre-AP AP. We are having training this coming summer for the seven high schools in the area of ELA, Biology and Social Studies. The IB, right now, we just work with the application process. We did have a workshop for our headmasters. CTE, again, is ongoing and is developing. We have CTE, we want to expand it. Early college and dual enrollment, again, is already in our schools. We want to expand it. We are also looking at creating a gateway to college program, the MOU expanding. It is the RFP that we are waiting. We are ready for the redesign. Our students need it. Our most marginalized kids are lacking the access to access and opportunity for the classes that they need to have to be prepared better for life outcomes.
So the redesign is designed to eliminate gaps, accelerate learning, amplify all voices, expand opportunities, build trust, and activate partnerships. And I just want to say this to Michael, to your point, Michael, about do we just want graduation? Graduation is the floor. The ceiling is great life outcomes. Every student deserves that. Thank you. We will take your questions.
All right. It was my turn to speak before unmuting. So thank you very much, doctors, for your presentation and to my fellow members. Well, first of all, if we could just remove the slides from the screen.
Oh, absolutely.
There we go. Just want to be able to see all the members. So, you know, as a reminder to my fellow members as we move into the questions and discussion section, as well as for those that are watching at home, this is just a first glance. This is a brief summary of some of the district's thinking on how we're going to go about high school redesign over the next several years. There's no vote that's being asked of us going forward, so we're not under any sort of time constraints here to ask every question and uncover every issue that may not have been touched upon to a very deep level in this presentation. But nevertheless, I think this is an opportunity for us to take a few moments each and provide some initial feedback to the district on direction and perhaps some indication of where we might see future presentations focus a little bit more in-depth on specific efforts. So I'd ask each of you, if you're looking to speak or ask questions, to virtually raise your hand through the Zoom function, and I see a couple of hands raised already, so I'll start with Dr. Rivera.
So thank you again for all your hard work on this, Dr. Bogumian and Dr. McIntyre. I had a couple of questions. I understand that there were more than seven schools that were approved to do seven to 12, or at least I know, like, for example, the Margarita Muniz was approved. I'm curious why, how the seven schools were chosen. I know you mentioned, you know, the current programming, the capacity, things, the location, the right sizing to accommodate. But if you could say a little more how you narrowed it down to the seven schools and the schools that were approved, what will happen with them?
So we have three phases. In Margarita Muniz, Tanya came to a meeting and, as you know, it will have to be a new building to have in there seven to 12, where they are already, where they are currently located. So again, this coming year is planning, and we also have the Mary Lyons. We have ACC that came forward, yes. So as we walk through the district, as we draw through the district, and it was the location of those seven comprehensive high schools.
I can answer a little bit of that too, Dr. Bogumian. You know, some of these decisions are included in the Build PPS decisions as well as we look at space and capacity. And the first seven that we thought were ones that were somewhat underutilized and had space in them to be able to take the seven through 12 right now and to begin to work on those plans. And then we, because we know we're closing the Edward School, so that's in Charlestown. We know that we did the K6 expansion in East Boston, so we need to have East Boston go. So there's some of those very easy decisions with some of the schools and then also to disperse them throughout Boston with this first phase. But we also asked folks if they're interested in signing up for any kind of restructuring for the seven 12 pathways, and some of the headmasters said they'd wait until the second or third phase.
So have you, but has there been like, I'm sure you've thought about it, and I know this is the beginning of this, of this, you know, engagement around these policies, but you know, there's a lot of concerns about, you know, feeder schools and sort of like the reverberating effects, right, of seat assignments? And if not all schools go to seven 12 at the same time, you know, how does that affect, right, those that are the nine to 12? So, you know, those have been some concerns that have actually, you know, been raised to me. A question I had as well was about how community and families have been involved so far in the process of, you know, of, you know, your thinking and rolling this out, what's been that engagement like? Are all headmasters on board? Just give us a sense of how, you know, levels of resistance or feasibility. Thank you.
I'll let Dr. Bogumian and Dr. McIntyre talk a little bit about the kind of brainstorming that they've been doing with headmasters. But when I went out to my strategic planning, I talked about some of these concepts with the strategic planning with the community, also talked with BSAK about this, you know, in the strategic planning, as well as Dr. Bogumian and Dr. McIntyre have engaged with them to get feedback. And as we said, this is a first glance, as we began to continue the engagement process over some of these ideas and some of the work that's going to be necessary to raise this level of rigor.
Right. We've, we were a part of a professional learning community where we engaged school leaders that represented different profiles of school throughout the district. I think we had 12 school leaders and also central office staff, and we met throughout the year trying to build out this process.
And we have been engaged lately with the seven headmasters that are in the redesign. We have been presenting to the Private Industry Council, and I will tell you, because of COVID, we have not done much engagement with students, and we need to do more engagement with families. We also had a meeting with, with post-secondary education. We've probably had around 15 colleges and universities that we presented to. There is much, much more work that we need to do.
Again, this is a first glance at some of the professional learning community recommendations and suggestions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Let's go to Ms. Robinson next. You're unmuted, Jerry. Let me unmute you.
Sorry about that. Thank you for the report. You know, I think how much the two reports are related that we've done tonight. And, you know, I think it's an amazing undertaking. What would be helpful for me would be to get What would be helpful for me would be to get some examples of how this would work in the life of a student. What would a child going through this, starting in seventh grade? What would the, what would his work look like? How, how would, what kind of courses would he or she take over the six years? And what would the opportunities be? Because I think I would really want to understand, you know, how do we take all of this and actualize it? I mean, I'm also thinking about what changes our teachers will need to be able to go through to be able to rise to the occasion of teaching these courses. And then also trying to understand the relationship between what we're proposing and how the AMAS Core relates. What comes first, you know, the IB, the AMAS Core? I see how some of these things are related, but it would be interesting to understand what the coursework or experiences look like from the four cores that as they relate up to the, to the AMAS Core itself. It just feels like there's a lot there that I would like something concrete to sort of hang on to. Not tonight necessarily, but just in general, yeah, not tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think one thing that is a struggle to balance is to get some ideas for people to react to and then to be able to go to the public and go to the stakeholders and get all of this work still vetted. And we have a whole nother year yet. So this is just a first glance into the process and trying to just gauge some interest and get your reaction first. And so this is how we're aligning the work with the AMAS Core.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
I'm done. Yep.
Thank you. I'll move on now to the vice chair.
All right. Thank you. I, my two comments are, well, thank you guys for your presentation first. I guess my, I said this before when we had our meeting on April 29. I talked about, I had the same question as Dr. Rivera, how these schools were chosen. And my concern is, and I, and I understand, you know, the open enrollment schools like Bear the Brunt. And, you know, they're taking all students and it's an unfair thing in all schools to take all students. So I, I, I'm on board with that. However, I guess my concern is that some of the schools, you know, on the list are low performing. And I just worry about adding so many things. The seven to 12, the AP, the IB and the AMAS Core. And so that's more my worry about just having so many things. And so I would like to understand a little bit more about the supports, et cetera. My large concern is really around the alternative education piece. So I want to better understand. I've been, I've been working in alternative education for, I don't even know how long. And it's, you know, it's taken a long time. And I feel like I'm still having the same conversation after all these years. You know, the importance of alternative education. So when you talk about like the attendance, there's a reason why. You know, you gave that broad range of 22 to 100%. There's a reason why some of our students are really struggling. And I think they play a really, really important role. And so I, I think, you know, if we really value alternative education, then we need to put that front and center and we need to make a larger investment. I worry about your model and I'm curious about a few things. In the past, we've always had like dedicated people who oversee, who have overseen alternative education. Seems like there's two of you now. But really, who is, who is the owner? Who's, who is in charge of Alt Ed? Who is like the champion? Who is the person that is the diehard that's bringing that constantly to the table? Because we need to have somebody who that is just their portfolio, that is what they do. I'm curious, you know, how you came to the assignment piece? That seems so limiting to me. I mean, I think part of what we love about alternative education is the innovation, the ingenuity, the uniqueness of it. And having those, you know, alternative education programs assigned to specific schools just seems very, very limiting to me. And when you said, you know, it's taking so long to get young people in seats. I mean, that is also a function of not having enough dollars. So if we really wanted to have more seats, we, we would put in a larger investment. I think that's like a, a big part of it. And I'm just wondering, you know, because I know many, the most, most of the Alt Ed leaders probably. How was, how, oh, I can't imagine that they really would agree to this. So I'm just curious, how was their involvement? What did they say? You know, what are their thoughts? What do, what do they foresee as the challenges? You know, or if you're saying that they all liked this model, I'd be curious to understand why.
Do you want us to answer now or just ruminate?
I guess, you know, this won't be the first discussion that we got it, but so I will leave it. I'm sure Michael O'Neil will have some, you should probably hear from him because he will probably have some of the same questions that I do. So you know, I don't want you to have to repeat yourself.
And I do want to share that, you know, the superintendents did go through an evaluation on alternative schools this year. So there's a lot of good data to look at in terms of designing. What does that look like in the future? And how do we address the significant needs of our students who attend the alternative schools? I think part of that is our middle school design. You know, we've brought Kevin McCaskill on, has a lot of middle school experience. And then with his vocational experience as well to look at career opportunities and exploration. And how do we design those middle school programs? So there's feeders so that our students can be more engaged in their learning. One of the things that I'm really concerned about, you know, you brought it up, is the chronic absenteeism. And we just have to figure out a way for students to want to come to school, whether it's an alternative school or whether it's one of our high schools. And I think that's a big, that's a big part of the budget that I'm going to be presenting hopefully year two.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just going to say, having worked with this population for a long time is very challenging. It's across the country. It's not just Boston.
Yeah.
You know, there's innovative ways. If we really take this seriously, then we, we would have to create jobs for these young people. A lot of these people also helping their families is like a lot of factors of why students aren't, you know, coming.
And this is a big reason of bringing Kevin McCaskill to the district systemically to look at those career pathways for our middle schoolers and to really think strategically about how we are feeding our vocational program at Madison Park and how we are providing for meaningful engagement. Many of the students are, you know, performers or artists or express themselves other ways and increasing the arts activities and athletics. All of those things keep kids engaged and connected to the school and able to do the higher level of rigor that we're expecting.
And also to design it as a school to work program for alternative education. We need to do that.
And I just want to bring up one more structural piece of the overall core four. We are held accountable for rigorous course taking by the state. It's one of the indicators now in terms of our overall ranking of, you know, how they, how they rank them in the percentages. And so that's not the only reason to add more rigor. But we are expanding AP, as I suggested before. We don't have AP in all of our high schools. We want to expand the career programs. We know early college, we had our first two students graduate with associate's degrees from Madison Park, who we are extremely proud of. I'm proud of that faculty for getting them over that hump. And then also the only new program, which is at the Quincy and also at Snowden, is to expand IB. And why would we think about expanding IB in so many schools? One, because it is an alternative and two, a high level of rigor. And it is international program that comes with, you know, the desire of families to want to have that diploma program because you get those credits as well. So there's, there's, that will bring the pull of a really nice mix of heterogeneous grouping of students at those seven comprehensive high schools. AP offers the AP capstone. IB offers the IB diploma program. And then you have your three exam schools as well. So it's a competitive option is what I'm saying for families who want that.
Do you have further questions, Vice Chair, or observations?
No, I was, I'm passing it to Mr. O'Neil because I know he's going to have the same question. So I'm saving.
Take it from here, Mr. O'Neil.
Am I that predictable?
I sat with you for like 20 years at the same Alt Ed table. I think I, I kind of know your thoughts.
You're right, Vice Chair. I will, I'm taking this presentation in the spirit it's intended, which was a first pass and just kind of get it out on the table. We've been talking about high school redesign for many years in Boston now. So at least now we're starting to get some ideas on the table. There's a lot here to process. And so superintendent, I understand the spirit in which you are proposing expanding IB. I'm a huge IB proponent, but we're doing it in two schools right now. I'd be interested to see in honesty how successful it actually is. How many students are actually graduating with an IB diploma? What some of the, hearing from the headmasters involved and what some of the challenges are. So I understand the spirit you're proposing a bunch of these. And it is part of raising the rigor outside of the exam schools, having more opportunity for all. I question how we're going to make that happen and when. And where in a logical format that we can be successful and not overwhelm folks? So there's a, there's a long way to go on this. So I just recognize you having your team put it out on the table today. What I will dig in on, and I share some of the questions that Dr. Rivera and Ms. Alveda and Ms. Robinson raised about how are these schools chosen? I mean, in particular in Charlestown, we have, yes, we're closing middle school. And so people are wondering what is the pathway going to be? And, but to have Charlestown High School go to the seven to 12 versus alternatively Harvard Kent going to K to eight and, you know, maybe sharing the building or Warren Prescott, which is already K to eight, sharing the building and the Edwards and just making it a larger K to eight. That's a separate conversation. I understand this is first pass, so I'm not going to dig in too far. What I will dig in on is, is what Ms. Alveda suggested that I would because it seems like this is a fairly concrete proposal on Alt Ed about going to a model where the schools have an assigned partner. And there has been a conscious effort in Boston the past few years to raise the opportunity. We stopped, we looked back, we realized students were dropping out. And in many cases, the previous district policy was, oh, you want to no longer drop out? You want to come back? Okay, great. You're assigned back to the school that you dropped out from. And that was a challenge for students who dropped out. In many cases, didn't want to return to the school that they were, that they had dropped out from. It could have been for a personal animosity. It didn't work, you name it, there are a range of reasons. And we developed the model of the re-engagement center that then said, we're going to work with you and find what is the right solution for you. We are going to have a portfolio of options, many arrows in the quiver. And we're going to have specialists that will meet with you and decide what's the right place for you. And the limiting factor for many reasons of many cases of why it takes so long for students to get seated is we don't have enough seats in the most popular alternative options. I'm intrigued by this potential matching of models. You know, Charlestown is going to be diploma plus, which is working there. Here's what we're going to do in East Boston, so on and so forth. But I'm concerned about that's taking away the option to find the right solution for the student and their needs and the challenges and the struggles that they have. That it appeared we were getting a lot of success on. I agree with the vice chair that the population you're dealing with has a lot of challenges and we cannot quite be using the same measurements of success that we are using. But that's a, I'm just going to stop. I'm echoing a lot of what the vice chair said. I share a lot of the same concerns, particularly about the Alt Ed model. And it comes back to what we have said previously, which is, you know, we need to know who's running this program and who has the responsibility for making the decisions on this. I think, you know, we were making some progress and now we're taking a fresh approach now. And I'm open to learning more. You know, Dr. McIntyre has a lot of experience with students that have struggled. And Dr. Brugman, you do as well. And so I'm interested in learning more, but I see some challenges with the model you have posed. And I'll leave my comments at that.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Neil. And, you know, thank you to all of our fellow members for the feedback and the initial takes on this first glance. And I think, you know, a common theme I've seen in a lot of the initial feedback here is so much of the cross-functional effects of high school redesign and what it, what it means for a number of the other big ticket initiatives that we have in the district. And, you know, certainly how, you know, we've seen in the comments tonight, how some of the examples that have been used with respect to alternative education and how redesigning high schools for certain general ed populations might affect the way that we move students through that system. And I think even from a facilities perspective, the questions that Mr. O'Neil raises around, you know, what happens in a neighborhood like Charlestown? And, you know, is there alternatives to the seven to 12 K six or K nine 12 model? You know, I think there's a bit of a need for us to continue to touch on some of these core initiatives that intersect with each of these presentations that we receive as a committee. Because I know we've talked, you know, just to go back on the Build BPS piece for one, quite a bit about, you know, what's the rationale for moving to a K six, seven to 12 model and K eight to nine to 12 model as the defaults in the system and how that affects the existing building stock and everything else. And, and that all feeds into what the thinking is that you've heard articulated here today about why some schools might be going earlier rather than later for, for seven to 12s. So I think, you know, the, I think the generalized feedback I would provide from tonight is that even taking a step back from high school redesign, just thinking about, you know, we've got high school redesign. We've got Build BPS, we've talked about, we got Alternative Ed. We're going to be talking about a number of very critical policy changes that are at the core of the superintendent's approach to equity for the district. We want to be able to have a touch point in each one of these presentations to understand how whatever is being proposed relates to all this other integral work that's part of the district. And so I'll look forward to, when we come back and we have that next conversation with high school redesign, we hear about a little bit, bit of that commonality. But I'd also love to hear about as well is just what some of these headmasters think that are going to be on the front lines of overseeing this transformation. And I know you've been, Dr. McIntyre, Dr. Brugman, been in close contact as well as the superintendent with a number of these headmasters on, on this approach. And so hearing a little bit about what their plans are as we move through the next two school years and beginning to implement some of this work. And certainly the, the schools that have already expanded to seven to 12 or perhaps already have these programs. I think about the recent examples of New Mission with their seven to 12 expansion or, you know, Stodden, for example, and Headmaster Roundtree over there and the work that they've done to expand the IB program. You know, these are, these are going to be helpful and guideposts for, you know, what they did right and what they've learned from things that they could have done better.
Yeah, Mr. Ch, I think with all of these, it might be good to have a retreat session where we tie and link all of it with the strategic plan so people can understand the links and how these all work together. As you know, in April, we were going to bring the Build PPS update. That was going to precede the high school update. So, and then we had all of the plan for the parent engagement with, with Elia and Linza with the high school redesign. But because, you know, we've had this, we're trying to move forward with some of our strategic initiatives and some of our strategic planning to still continue to move forward because we do have deep because we do have deep equity work to do in the district. And we, we do want to begin to start laying out some of these plans for the public to react to so that we can have something hopefully by January, that's really pretty solid as we begin to think about, you know, the following year and where we're headed. Now, obviously we've been thrown a curve ball with the remote learning and we're trying to fit that into, and how do we take lessons from the remote learning opportunity? We had already planned one-to-one with our students in this year's budget. Um, and then how do we put together hub schools so that you know that there's a supportive pieces as well as putting the seven to 12s? We're leaving the K eights and nines right now. We have done the analysis with the movement of the students and what, what that would look like in these schools and whether there would be space or not space and and all of those considerations. And that was going to be presented earlier, but I think it would be really probably good to have, you know, a much larger discussion linking these pieces together so people can see how, how they all kind of match up rather than in little chunks. I think that might be, make more sense. I mean, anyone who would say that this body is a rubber stamp body just needs to take a, uh, watch this recording tonight. Because there's been a lot of really good thoughtful discussion, a lot of very good feedback for our team. And we're going to take all that back and bring it forward. But I think the one thing I'm taking away today is that it needs to have clear connections between how they all relate to one another. So that the, so that the school committee can feel comfortable in the way that we're moving forward.
Well, Superintendent, I think that's a great idea. And, um, you know, it's been a while since our last retreat and we've typically looked at those retreats to set our agenda for the quarter ahead, as well as to talk about some of these greater issues that just the, the time and the format for school committee really doesn't provide us with the opportunity to have the type of exchange that we're looking for. So I think we're going to have to try it on Zoom this time. I might have, have to mail each of you your donut prior to the, to the retreat, but, uh, you know, we'll figure it out one way or another. And I'm sure we'll be able to find some time as we perhaps get a little bit of a chance to take a breather over the summer, hopefully, and regroup and, and think about, you know, how we come back fresh for the fall.
Yeah. And to be honest, the school leaders have a mixture of excitement and fear. You know, it's a, it is a big undertaking to turn around high schools as Dr. McIntyre and Dr. Bruggerman both know. And so we don't take these recommendations lightly. We want to think through them. We've been, we've tried to be very thoughtful in taking two years to really think through these things. And so I'm looking forward to that retreat to put it together.
Well, excellent. Uh, well, if there's nothing further from the committee, I will thank the superintendent and Doctors McIntyre and Bruggerman once again for their presentation and their brevity and presenting some very complex but high level information on high school redesign. We'll look forward to seeing you again soon on this issue.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll move on now to public comment on reports. Do we have any folks signed up tonight, Ms. Sullivan?
No, we have no speakers for public comment on reports.
Well, very good. Uh, is there any new business from the committee?
Um, Mr. Chair, I, I know I'm not supposed to bring new business, but I did want to make some, um, just some comments off of what the speakers who did come prior, just to clear up a few things.
Okay. You've got, you've got four minutes to be 10:00 PM.
Okay, okay. Cause the lights are going to shut off. You have your family members shut the lights off. I saw you kiss your daughter. Good night.
That's right. This is, this is automatic.
Yes, I'm sorry. I just wanted to clear up that we do give computers out to every student. I know I was out there delivering them. And so every student at house, if you do need one, you should contact us so that we can get that to you. You know, I do, I delivered two to the same household. So we do do that. And so I just wanted to, to clear that up and that's all that I got.
Well, thanks very much. And I know I've heard from a number of your colleagues about tales of driving, crisscrossing the city each day, going to work and toting about two dozen Chromebooks in their trunk because they know they might be called at any time to deliver a a camp, a computer on the spot. And so I think that speaks to the all hands on deck approach that your administration's take, taken to this effort. So we appreciate you continuing to do that. Uh, any other new business from the committee? Or if there's nothing else, the next school committee meeting will take place on Zoom on Wednesday, June 10th at 5:00 PM. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Any discussion or objection to the motion? We're going to have Ms. Sullivan call the roll to vote us out.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you once again, Ms. Sullivan. Good night, Ms. Robinson. Good night to everyone else. And thank you for your time once again this evening. Everybody safe, safe. And we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Au revoir.
Good night.
Good night.